Well, I show at six o'clock this Tuesday, November 20th. Good time for a regular meeting of the Oak Harbor City Council. We do work off an agenda and hopefully there should be copies of that agenda in the back. Any corrections, additions to our corrected agenda? One that staff wishes to add is right after citizens' comment, staff would like to go into an executive session briefly regarding labor negotiations. So if we can amend our existing agenda to show that executive session, that would be great.
May we amend and add the executive session to our agenda, please?
Second. I've got a motion to amend and a second from Councilmember Campbell. Any in reference to that motion? Okay. Councilmember Heisen.
I'm just curious as to why we're adding it after comment and not at the end of the meeting like it was originally scheduled.
Good question. And I'm going to turn to our interim city administrator, Dr. Court, for that answer.
I can respond to that. Yes, there's an agenda item on tonight's agenda that may be influenced by the information that will be delivered to you during that executive session.
Any other comments, questions regarding that motion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and all those in favor of adding the executive session to tonight's agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any other additions? Then all those in favor of working off the corrected agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We have an agenda. In fact, our first item of business, if you can join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance and followed by an invocation given by our Councilmember Campbell.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Councilmember Campbell.
Please pray with me, please. Father in heaven, Lord, we come before you tonight so grateful for you giving us this opportunity to come and serve your citizens. We thank you so much for the citizens that have come to the meeting tonight. We thank you for the fact that they want to participate, they want to talk to us, they want to tell us how they feel throughout the year. We thank you for that very, very much. Lord, we ask as we go through our meeting tonight that you instill in each of us the will to do whatever's right, Lord. And we ask that you guide us in that direction. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Campbell. And prior to getting to roll call, if I can entertain a motion by Councilmember Servadius.
Thank you, Mayor. I would move to excuse Councilmember Severance from tonight's meeting.
Okay. We've got a motion to excuse Councilmember Bob Severance from tonight's meeting.
Second.
And a second from Councilmember Muns. Any discussion on that? All those in favor of that excused absence signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Now then I'll turn to our interim city clerk, Nusel Husele, for our roll call.
I'm supposed to pull this very close. Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Scott Dudley.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Danny Pagau.
Do I say?
Councilmember Tara Heisen.
Present.
Councilmember Beth Muns.
Present.
Councilmember Jim Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Rick Omburg.
Present.
Councilmember Joel Servadius.
Present.
Thank you.
And you'll notice that minutes are going to be presented at the December 4th meeting. And our next agenda item is a proclamation that'll be read by Councilmember Muns.
Mayor, is there someone here representing this group tonight?
Not that I'm aware of. Possibly yes, maybe no. Looking for hands.
For pancreatic cancer?
We have a proclamation in reference to the Pancreatics Cancer Month and I'm not seeing anyone jumping up and down at this time, but it's a great proclamation anyway.
I'll just read it from here then instead of I'm not. Pancreatic cancer awareness month, November 2012. Whereas in 2012 alone, an estimated 43,920 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer and it will claim the lives of over 37,390 in the United States alone. Pancreatic cancer is the fourth leading cause of cancer death in the country. When symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is usually too late for an optimistic prognosis and most patients will lose their battle with the disease within five years. There is no known cure for pancreatic cancer and no significant improvements in survival rates in the last 40 years. The Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is the first and only nationwide patient advocacy organization to focus efforts on research funding, patient service, public awareness, and education for this deadly disease. The Pancreatic Cancer Action Network and its affiliates support those patients who currently battle pancreatic cancer as well as to those who have lost their lives to the disease and are committed to nothing less than a cure. The good health and well-being of the residents of Oak Harbor are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection causes and effective treatments. Now, therefore we, Scott Dudley, Mayor, and council members of the City of Oak Harbor do proclaim November as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. Signed this 20th day of November, 2012. Scott Dudley, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Muns. Our next agenda item is actually a presentation by the Chamber of Commerce and I believe, yep, we have our President of the Greater Oak Harbor Chamber of Commerce, Jason McFadden, with us this evening to give us that presentation. Mr. McFadden.
Thank you, Mayor Dudley. I'm here just to present the Oak Harbor Chamber of Commerce Annual Report. And are we going to do the lights or just leave it and everybody good with the way it is? We're good?
Okay.
The scope of the presentation is going to be the financial overview and the community contribution for 2012, our 2013 tourism goals in the chamber overview. The lodging tax or 2% funds is only collected from lodging, hotels, motels, private campgrounds, RVs, parks, and similar facilities where the stay is less than one month. Its intention is to attract overnight visitors through destination promotion. The tax is credited against the state retail sales tax. The funding received by the chamber has no relationship to the money that is collected for the Island County Tourism. That is a second 2% tax that was voluntarily assessed by lodging through an inter-local agreement for the purpose of promoting countywide tourism. The money is reimbursed for services rendered and is not paid upfront. So we do the service, we submit an invoice to you guys, and then you guys pay us back. 2012 year-to-date financial overview. The chamber operates as a nonprofit and receives its operational funding from three major sources: membership dues and programs, special events, and the city and county 2% hotel and motel tax funds. Our income year-to-date is $305,000. $153,000 from membership dues and programs, $55,000 from special events, $97,000 from city and county 2% funds. Our expenses year-to-date are $290,000. $132,000 for chamber services and operations, $146 in special event costs, $112,000 in tourism promotion and operations. The visitor information center, maintenance, operation, and staffing. The land lease and property tax, $6,300. Our mortgage is $8,400. Our tourism-related staffing, which is graphics, promotion, and design, special event coordination, tourism programs, development, and oversight, VIC operations and management is $61,000. Maintenance and repairs is $5,200. We had to paint the interior of the building this year, so that's why that one's so high. For a total of about $81,000. The billboard, and everyone knows where the billboard is just before Sharp's Corner there on the right. It's $640 a month. Anytime you want to change the design, it's $1,200. So next year's investment is about $9,000 and below the stats there is the proposed billboard. So a question that we have for the council is if something that you guys still want to want to have out there, that's a direct cost. Visitors served. We assisted more than 10,000 visitors through the walk-in, phone calls, and emails. They track those every time someone calls or walks in or emails inquiring about something to do with Oak Harbor. They assisted in more than 31,000 visitors at the Wildwagon at Deception Pass Bridge. They distributed 6,000 discount cards to visitors, received almost 80,000 website hits with roughly 62% as unique visitors. They made 286 direct lodging referrals in 2012, communicated with more than 2,700 Facebook fans daily. They have 2,700 followers. That's pretty good. Community support and leadership. Our partnership with you provides a staffed visitor information wagon at Deception Pass Bridge, May through September, maintenance and operation of the visitor center on Highway 20, regional advertising and marketing campaigns to promote Oak Harbor as a tourism destination, and an updated chamber website and ongoing social media activities to promote community engagement. If you guys haven't seen the new website, check it out. It's really, really great. So some of the special events that we help with are the Fourth of July Parade, we raised the money for the fireworks, the Magic on Pioneer, No Trick Save Treats, Military Appreciation Picnic, and of course, Hall and Happening. Our compliments for 2012, we have the new website, like I mentioned, oakharborchamber.com. We produced a TV commercial and we're going to see that at the conclusion of this broadcast if anybody didn't get a chance to see it on Channel 7. We designed a new ad campaign to target Deception Pass visitors and if you know Jill, you know that she is the queen of sayings and acronyms and everything's oh something, look, oh accomplishments. So the new slogan we're going to market this year is "Just a Splash Pass, Deception Pass." We helped Driftwood Days earn a segment on Evening Magazine and we recruited and supported the new whale-watching venture. And here are four council members and the owners of Deception Pass Tours cutting their ribbon on their first day of operation. The activities that we do monthly, we do a monthly membership luncheon. We did 18 ribbon cuttings this year, 10 business after-hours, 11 Tuesdays on the town. We had nine celebrity bartenders, including your mayor, Scott Dudley. 900 indoc bags passed out. We have a year-long shop local messaging campaign, including our first shop local calendar. 180 visitor bags distributed, 85 community volunteers placed for senior culmination projects, 1,100 visitors to the chamber's wedding website, which is O-I-D-O and the O is O-H-I-D-O, of course. We have the annual chamber awards banquet, 52 weekly community and business event emails, 75 relocation packets mailed. So your $80,000 investment equals 4,160 direct tourism staff hours valued at $61,000, 36,000 volunteer hours valued at 78,444, leveraging additional 2% in membership funds for a total of 179. So your total ROI is $318,000 on $80,000. Any businessperson knows that that's a pretty good return on investment. Our goals for this year, to market "Just a Splash Pass, Deception Pass," to move a majority of our print advertising to online targeted messaging advertising, produce a new video for online and TV, continue the Hall and Happening and Fourth of July community events and other community events, and continue our partnership with Island County Tourism and Cascade Loop Association. Tonight's photos were provided by Pam Huldridge, Hedridge, and now we're going to watch the video.
Oak Harbor was so close, but another world away. We stayed on the beach, hiked near Deception Pass, played golf, and shopped at some of the cutest shops I've ever seen. The kids would love it. Next time, maybe we'll even invite them. For information, visit oakharborchamber.com. Oak Harbor was so close, but another world away. We stayed on the beach, hiked near Deception Pass, played golf, and shopped at some of the cutest shops I've ever seen. The kids would love it. Next time, maybe we'll even invite them. For information, visit oakharborchamber.com.
We use, so let's watch it. I hear one more. And there's a little girl sitting next to the mermaid and that's Jerry Oliver's, one of Jerry Oliver's daughters. So we use local people in this, too.
Oak Harbor was so close, but another world away. We stayed on the beach, hiked near Deception Pass, played golf, and shopped at some of the cutest shops I've ever seen. The kids would love it. Next time, maybe we'll even invite them. For information, visit oakharborchamber.com.
So I just wanted to thank you for your continued support and partnership and hope that we can keep it going in 2013.
Well, I appreciate that, Mr. McFadden. Let me go ahead and before we turn to the council and see if the council has any questions for you and the chamber, let me turn to the public and see if the public wishes to have any comments. They can do so now and what we're going to do is have you come up to the mic and state your name and you'll have three minutes to comment in reference to this agenda item, which is our Greater Oak Harbor Chamber of Commerce.
Hi, I'm Anthony Stedman. I'm from Oak Harbor and I'm a former board president of the Chamber of Commerce. My time with the chamber goes back to a time when the chamber just about folded up. It had rough times and membership was low and nobody came to luncheons and so I know from where this organization came. And I'm so proud of the way it is right now because I've talked to business people in the community and asked them, "What do you think of the chamber?" And the answer overall, without a doubt, is the chamber does a job for me. And that's all we can ask. If the business people say, "I'm getting my money's worth with chamber membership dues and it's making my life easier," then that's what we need. And that's what the Chamber of Commerce gives now. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Stedman. Anyone else? And we'll bring back up Ms... Oh, yep, one more.
Ron Hancock, Oak Harbor Pine Airway. I'm with the Navy History PVY and War Department and I'd sure like to see more of a visual presence of the Navy Heritage Center. It's not just our Navy history, it's the local, regional history. And we are a member of the chamber, so I'd just like to make everybody aware of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hancock. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring up Mr. McFadden, turn to the council, and see if the council has any questions, comments, starting with Councilmember Heisen.
I have no questions.
Okay. Councilmember Omburg.
Well, I can agree with Mr. Stedman. I remember some of those early days where you would go to the meeting and there was hardly a person there to be found and now you go there and it's difficult to find a table. So keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, Pagau.
Mr. McFadden, I would like to thank you and the Island County Commissioner-elect Jill Johnson and the Chamber of Commerce for promoting tourism, attract tourists, come to Oak Harbor.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell.
Thank you. Kudos to the chamber. Everything that's been said tonight, I've experienced and I think it's really great. I'm on the Island County Tourism Board and I was wondering, could I get one of you to email that presentation to me? I've got a meeting coming up and I'll take it to the meeting.
We can do that, can't we?
Thank you. I've got lots of yeses.
Yeah. Councilmember Muns.
Just many thanks for everything you do, but you have, tell your board, you have an excellent staff and you can come in there with a situation about anything and someone is willing to sit down and work with you and help you find a solution and that is much appreciated, especially we have no clue what you're doing, but you need this help now.
Right.
And so very much kudos to the staff that you have hired and put together because I see many of them there.
They're here.
It is very, very good and the volunteers that are there, too. So thank you very much for what you guys give to the community.
Thank you. Chamber board member and councilmember, Councilmember Servadius.
Thank you, Mayor. I will echo all of my peers' comments, having been on the board for, it's hard to believe, but over 10 years. We take for granted a lot of things that get done in town, sometimes at special events. The fireworks display is a great one. For many years, people would come up and say, "What a great job the city did." Well, actually, it was all private citizens in the chamber that raised those funds and so, you know, keep up the good work. I want to echo on the volunteers. I don't know how you, Jill, others have recruited some of the great people as well as the paid staff, but they're always there and they just, you know, they're great people wanting to do the job. Thank you.
Appreciate those words, guys. Thank you. Thank you. Keep up the good work and we, yeah, take back our thanks to the chamber and we look forward to another great year next year. Okay. Thank you. At this time, our next agenda item is time for citizens' comment period. This is a time for public comment. Anyone wishing to address the city council on matters within the jurisdiction of the city and are not on the agenda may do so now, as we'll take up those agenda items and allow you to speak at that time on those agenda items. You can also speak to any of the consent agenda items. Matters not appearing on the city council's agenda will not receive action at this meeting but may be referred to staff for a future meeting. Presentations are limited to three minutes and we're going to ask you to state your name and speak into the microphone as we are taping this and televising this and streaming live. So at this time, we open up for public comment.
I am Marshall Goldberg and live just north of Oak Harbor. I represent a group of Island County residents called Island County Citizens Ignited Against Citizens United. Our group is dedicated to getting resolutions passed at the local level, asking Congress for a constitutional amendment to overturn the U.S. Supreme Court's Citizens United decision. We have encouraging results from the November 6 elections. Nearly 7 million citizens voted for their representatives to pass a constitutional amendment to overturn the Supreme Court's Citizens United ruling and declare that only human beings, not corporations, are entitled to constitutional rights and that money is rich and that campaign spending can be regulated. In 120 Massachusetts towns, voters representing about a third of the state's population voted 75% in support of a constitutional amendment. In Illinois, 2 million voters from 10 voting districts spoke with a supermajority to say yes. For the first time, the voters in two states spoke in favor of overturning Citizens United: Colorado's Amendment 65 passed by 74% and Montana's Initiative 166 by 75%. These states now join nine others who acted through their legislatures to call for a constitutional amendment. Since April, we have been collecting signatures on a citizens' advisory petition, asking our local jurisdictions for a resolution, urging the Washington State Legislature and Congress to amend the U.S. Constitution to overturn Citizens United. We have collected 1,750 signatures from Island County registered voters, 450 of which live in the Oak Harbor area. With our urging, the City of Langley, the Board of Island County Commissioners, and the Town of Coopville have passed resolutions and joined seven other jurisdictions in the state of Washington in this effort: Port Townsend, Seattle, Olympia, Bellingham, Jefferson, and Snohomish Counties, and last but not least, La Conner. We have met with one of your council members and have arranged to meet with another council member. We appreciate whatever time you're willing to give us. Like you, we love our country and treasure our democracy. We want them each to be the best possible. Please give us the opportunity to meet with you at your earliest convenience. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Goldberg. Anyone else?
Over the last several years, there's been a lot of discussion about doing things online to make things more open to the public and cut down on paperwork and et cetera. There's a lot of things that are great to be done online. However, I urge extreme caution. Here recently Burlington had a large sum of money taken out of their Bank of America account. Tonight on the news, Goldbar just had $450,000 that was discovered by Portland and Oregon Police Investigation, stolen from their Bank of America account. About half it's been recovered so far. In the case of Goldbar, they believe that the source was putting information online, including canceled checks, so that the state wouldn't have to come up for their audit. They believe that somebody hacked into that information and that's how this occurred. So internet is a great thing. It's a great way to get the public more involved, but you've got to be extremely careful. You've got to make sure that your firewalls are in place and nothing that could possibly compromise the city is allowed to go beyond that firewall.
Thank you, Mr. Vance. Anyone else for public comment?
Shane Hoffmeyer, Oak Harbor, Washington. I know it's Thanksgiving week here, so thankfully I'm not here with anything to complain about. I do have a request, though. I'd like to ask you guys to consider, and I've been in contact with some of the planning commission members as well, but if you guys would consider amending the animal control code and I know towns across the country as small as Coopville and cities as large as Seattle have done this, if you guys could consider allowing some backyard urban chickens, if you will, you know. I know you look around town and there actually is quite a few. I know in the past I have asked people here at City Hall and Animal Control and, you know, quite often the answer is, yes, they're allowed, but they're not allowed, or no, they're not allowed, but yes, we allow them. So if there was a way to clear that up, I know that's confusing, but that's how confused I am when I call. I know at one point I asked the animal control and they said, "Well, we allow a lynx as an exotic pet." So yes, we'll allow them and citizens can just say that they don't eat eggs. So I guess if there was a way to clear that up and maybe, I know we've got an interim city administrator might have some Coopville experience on this and maybe he'd be willing to lend you guys some help. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffmeyer. Anyone else for a public comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment at this time and based on our amended agenda, we'll at this time go into an executive session in reference to labor negotiations. And so if you can, give the council until quarter of, so quarter to, 7 o'clock, we'll be back and we'll be in a brief executive session at this time. to, 7 o'clock, we'll be back, and we'll be in a brief executive session at this time. Okay, at this time, we'll go ahead and reconvene this regular meeting of the Oak Harbor City Council. When we last left you, we went into an executive session to discuss labor negotiations. Like every executive session, no action is taken in an executive session, nor do we anticipate any action taken at this time. But as we take a look at our agenda items, our next item is our consent agenda. So, we'll turn to our interim city clerk, Nissel Huslin, for the reading of our consent agenda items.
Thank you, Mayor. The first agenda, consent agenda item to consider is approval of accounts payable vouchers, number 152000, and the amount of $49,168.85. And numbers 152001 to 152154, and the amount of $491,218.42. Appointment of Daisy Sapida. Term on the park board. Appointment of Mike Wright to a three-year term on the park board. Appointment of Georgette Anglum to fill an unexpired term on the youth commission. Appointment of Rainette Wood to the Oak Harbor Youth Commission. Appointment of Andrea Thomas to the Oak Harbor Youth Commission. A resolution number 1231, which replaces a duplicate resolution number 1210. Set a public hearing to consider ordinance number 1648 REIT I. Set a public hearing to consider ordinance number 1649 REIT II. Both of them will be appearing on the December 4 council meeting. Approval of several payroll checks. September 14, 2012, payroll checks number 95822 to number 95836, and the amount of $385,610.1. Approval of 91912 payroll check, number 95837, the amount of $4,420. Approval of 91812 payroll checks, number 95838, to number 95867, in the amount of $571,677.24. Approval of 928, 2012 payroll checks, number 95868, to number 95889, in the amount of $93,486.74. Approval of the 1015, 2012 payroll checks, number 95890 to number 95902, in the amount of $378,678.64. Approval of 1031, 2012 payroll checks, number 95903 to number 95935, in the amount of $572,806.78. And finally, the approval of the 1031, 2012 payroll checks, number 95936, to number 95955, in the amount of $43,570.22.
Thank you, Ms. Huslin. Turning to the City Council, what would the council wish to do with the consent agenda items? Councilmember Cervantes?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to pull items D, E, and F, just for a comment, please.
Any other items? Councilmember Campbell?
Item number M. When you read that, you said approval of 91812. Do some of our agenda items have a typo on it? The one I have says 928.
Item number M, it is 928. Apologize.
Okay, so we have two 928s.
Well, the other one is, the other one is checks for direct deposit, I believe. So, there's two that were issued on that time.
Thank you.
So, like P, P, and Q. Okay. Anyone else wish to pull any other agenda items off the consent agenda? Okay. With the remaining, what would the council wish to do? Subtracting D, E, and F. Councilmember Campbell?
I make a motion that we approve consent agenda items A, B, G, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, Q. Sorry, I'm sorry.
Are you wishing to approve Agenda Item C as well?
Oh, I thought that was the one we pulled. Okay, yes, Agenda Item C also.
Okay, we've got a motion from Councilmember Campbell to approve Consent Agenda Items A, B, C, G, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, P, and Q, and a second from Councilmember Omburg. Any discussions regarding that? All those in favor of those consent agenda items signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Okay. Turning to Councilmember Cervantes, in reference to those consent agenda items, D, E, and F.
Thank you, Mayor. This has, these comments I'm about to make have absolutely no bearing to the names listed here. Having been involved with youth sports, though, for many years as a coach, it's fairly customary that we have background checks for any of our volunteers. And I was just curious if the city, in working with youth, or the youth commission, if that's something that we have ever looked into in that capacity, when we have a youth advisory board or...
Yeah, good question. I'll turn to Councilmember Heisen. You can speak to what you see on that board, as you are actively involved in reference to the youth commission.
I would be happy to. We actually had a very in-depth discussion about this at our last youth commission meeting, about whether or not we wanted to implement that kind of thing for the youth commission. And we decided that it probably wouldn't be necessary, because we don't actually work directly with youth on the youth commission. Our, our goal on the youth commission is to work with the community and to assess what we think the community thinks the needs of the youth are, and then to kind of, you know, assess those needs, and then point people in the right direction. So, we're not actually working with kids. We're just kind of pointing people towards other resources, if that makes sense.
Super that I would move, Mayor, to approve Items D, E, and F.
Second.
And a motion from Councilmember Cervantes, second by Councilmember Munz, to go ahead and approve those consent agenda items, D, E, and F. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of those agenda items, D, E, and F, signify by saying aye. Those opposed? And those agenda items pass. At this time, we'll go ahead and turn to the podium for our next agenda item, which I believe we might be hearing from our senior planner, Ethan Spoo, regarding the public hearing on the Shoreline Master Program. Mr. Spoo?
Good evening. Just give me one second here to pull up my presentation. Okay, before I get started tonight, I'd just like to recognize that we have Kevin Gifford with HBL. HBL is our consultant. They've been with us for the full three years of this project. We also have David Pater with the Department of Ecology, again, here with us to help answer any questions. Both Kevin and David can help answer the questions. Have just a short presentation for you tonight. This is the third city council meeting on this topic, so should be pretty brief. The goal, at least from staff's perspective tonight, is to move towards approval of a resolution that we have attached to your agenda packet there. Before we do, we have a couple topics that we'd like to spend just a little bit of time on. Talk about the additional legal review that was done, the Planning Commission recommendation, the Dillard's and East Ditch issue. I'll explain more about that. Continuing the public, not continuing the public hearing, but accepting public testimony and then closing the public hearing, if that's what council sees as fit, and then moving on to the resolution. So, the legal review that happened pointed out some technical issues with the document. We don't believe that those changes substantively changed the document in any way. It's still the same basic master program that you have. So, the types of changes that we're talking about are rewording, changes to definitions, clarifications in some cases. And I would be happy to answer any questions that you have about any of those changes. Those are, again, in red line in the document from the previous version that you had seen. Planning Commission recommendation, this issue we discussed with you at your October 24 workshop, as well as the November 7 city council meeting. And the issue was that Planning Commission had draft, had recommended approval of the draft SMP with one change to it, and that is that piers and docks be permitted use for single-family residences along East Pioneer Way. That's in our urban mixed-use environment designation. That recommendation has been incorporated into our draft document that's before you tonight, and there's some pages listed there where you can find some of those changes. So, staff will work to update some of the supporting documentation for the Shoreline Master Program, including the cumulative impacts analysis, to be consistent with that, that change. Dillard's addition and the East Ditch, some call it the canal there, down in Friend Marsh. That was an area that was added to shoreline jurisdiction late in the process. Again, we've, I think we brought this up to you at the October 24 workshop. That jurisdictional change brought in five different property owners down there at Dillard's addition. We had a neighborhood meeting with them just last week on November 15, and the outcome of that meeting was that staff offered that DOE might be able to measure salinity again in that East Ditch after approval, assuming approval would be tonight, and then, but prior to the final adoption. So, I'll explain a little bit more about this later, but you would, if this is what you choose to do, you would approve tonight, and then the Shoreline Master Program would then be forwarded on to DOE for their review, and then we would come back with an ordinance at a later date and ask for final adoption. Couple of other things that came out of the meeting. If salinity is under the threshold, DOE goes back out there and measures it again, and it's under the threshold, we could potentially revise, or we would revise that map prior to the final adoption and approval of the ordinance. If salinity still exists, then possibility is out there that we could revise some of the regulations, so that those property owners that are along the ditch aren't subject to the same standards as those that are along Oak Harbor, for instance. And we do have, going back to that issue, I think we handed out to you some meeting notes that we took from that meeting that are there in front of you. So, you should have that. We'd just like to make that part of the record formally and part of the minutes for this meeting. So, the recommendations that we have for you, there's two of them, require two motions, we think. So, first one would be that after accepting testimony, recommend that you close the public hearing and approve Resolution 1230, approving the proposed Shoreline Master Program, as recommended by the Planning Commission. And then, secondly, to direct staff to contact the Department of Ecology and request that it measure the salinity in the East Ditch. Again, and depending on the results, staff would respond accordingly. That concludes my presentation, so I'd be happy to answer any questions.
The, the second, the second recommendation, do you want that as a formal motion? Do you want a general consensus? Do you want that as specific council action directing staff to do, to do that?
I think it would help if it was a motion directing staff to do that.
Okay. At this time, we'll go ahead and continue to take that testimony. We'll turn to the public, and anyone wishing to publicly comment during this public hearing process can do so now. We're going to have you up at the mic, at the podium, and we're going to ask you to state your name, and you have three minutes to comment.
Dwayne Dillard, 2150 Southwest Dillard Lane. First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Spoo and Mr. Powers for meeting with the residents of the neighborhood last week. In this shoreline decision, we know that the DOE now says that the East Ditch of Friends Marsh is shoreline, because they found a small sample of saltwater. Number two, this finding affects five properties of the Dillard neighborhood. Number three, according to Mr. Spoo, this sample was taken in August of 2012. What we do not know is, number one, what is the source of the saltwater in the ditch? Is it perking through the soil, or coming through the city tidegate? Two, why weren't the samples taken throughout the year, not only during the driest period? Three, what will accept, what will, accepting the shoreline plan with this finding do to the value of these properties? More than likely, the setbacks and limiting building budgets will limit property use and resale value. I encourage that the council question this portion of the plan until they know all of the facts. If they approve the plan as presented, this portion will, more than likely, not be reversible.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Dillard. Anyone else?
Dan Dillard, 513 Southeast Neal Street, Oak Harbor. I'm going on recollection of that, I wouldn't even call that a tidegate down there. I'd just call it a barrier, because the last time I was in there, when I was younger, it was just a barrier to hold saltwater out. That was probably put in there in the, I would say, the 1920s. A tidegate would let the water out, wouldn't let the water in. And my suggestion, when we had our meeting, was that we put in a large check valve, which will let the fresh water out, will not let the saltwater in. And that's, I know that there is saltwater coming over that, because at one time, when we had the, the fish were being raised in the pens here in Oak Harbor, and the fish returned for spawning, they had no place to go, and they were going up that ditch. Because we could see salmon swimming up that ditch, so we know there was fish going over that barrier. So, before we do anything, I would like to see this not approved master plan, or the Dillard properties in that area, the five properties, held out of that, until there's a decision made, and possibly a check valve put in. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dillard. Anyone else?
Hi, Robin Kletus. First of all, I also wanted to thank Steve Powers and Mr. Spoo for spending a lengthy amount of time with the five residents down there. And then, I did do a public records request on Friday, and I received it today, which is phenomenal. And I just wanted to really thank the city for, for doing that for me so quickly. Ethan and Nissel, okay. And then there was a couple other points that I had. I had a little bit of time to go through that public records request today, but not a lot of it. But, number one, allowing this designation to remain unchanged is going to create a very difficult task for the city to eventually improve this, I guess, archaic system of stormwater transport in the future. The open ditch, it is just an open ditch, is already a liability to the city. And as we see the number of people using and recreating in the Friend Marsh area, we see a higher potential of someone falling into that ditch and getting seriously injured. And making this a protected shoreline or tideland is going to make it very difficult for the city to do anything to change that ditch in the future, and it will significantly increase the cost to do so as well. The other thing I noted was that designating this an SMP-protected area does not actually further the goals of the SMP. It doesn't provide access to the shoreline for the public. It doesn't provide... It doesn't provide, it doesn't protect, I'm sorry, natural resources. It's not a natural ditch. It's a man-made ditch. The other problem with the man-made ditch is that it actually contributes to pollution in the harbor. It collects dirty wastewater from the city and dumps it into the harbor. Protecting that system of wastewater transport is in no way a positive influence for our shoreline protection. I also noted that the DOE had mentioned there was saltwater tolerant plants in the area, not saltwater, sorry, I lost my place here, not saltwater dependent plants. It would make sense to me that the cosmopolitan or seed side sagebrush that they mentioned was growing in the ditch would grow in the ditch. It's propagated by seed in areas where saltwater is. And certainly doesn't mean that saltwater is in that ditch at all times. I think we see a concentration of that saltwater come through the tide gate in a higher concentration when there's no water coming down, there's no rainwater in that ditch. So two, two months out of the year, we see that ditch very low. Those months are August and September. If you're going to go look at that ditch today and compare it to the pictures that were taken at the time the levels were red, it is a completely different environment. I have a very hard time believing that those salination levels would be equal or anywhere near today to what we saw then. So I just really want to thank the DOE for offering to look at that again. And hopefully it won't be an issue. And I just hope that the council understands that this isn't just about five residents. This is city-owned property and it's going to affect the city in a very negative way as well. Thank you.
Ms. Kletus, thank you.
David Glass, mailing address P.O. Box 713, Oak Harbor. I do own a house in the Dillard area and I'm amazed that I'm now a shoreline resident under the plan. That ditch is how Walmart drains its parking lot. That's not a tidal pool. And what Robin said about there's more traffic back there, people being back there, you can see them there all the time. They're now taking dogs and kids back all through that area. So I'd like the council to look at it and I appreciate the DOE being here. And they've talked about possibly retesting and I think that's a good idea because salinity, the Great Salt Lake, all that came from evaporating, water evaporating. Salt doesn't go anywhere. It stays there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glass.
Ron Hancock, I'm a resident on East Pioneer Way. I'd like to make a couple of comments about the process. There's a lot of us in the community that don't feel comfortable talking in public forums and there's even those of us that aren't all that hot at writing letters. It's been a pleasure to work with the Planning Commission. I felt like they were open and respectful. And with Mr. Spoo, it was nice to have somebody who had the intelligence he has on the situation and, and a bit of compassion for the citizens. One of the things I noted in the Planning Commission was that East Pioneer Way citizens donated land to the city so they could widen Pioneer Way and support the city and make a statement of support to the Navy when they widened Pioneer, when the Navy decided to open up the Maui Gate. And my point was, and is covered in, in the recommendations, that the single-family resident families down on Pioneer Way get to retain the right to have a dock or pier of reasonable size while they're privileged to be able to live out their lives or whatever down there and share that with their families. So I just wanted to tell you, I appreciated the process. I put together some things here for the council so I won't be wordy up here. One thing I can't believe I missed was that I wanted to make, I wanted to make a statement about the firefighter park. When the firefighters put in for that park to acknowledge our, our history as a city and our major fires, there was at least three major fires in view of that, that little pocket park. One of their intentions was to have a small deck down there where the everyday citizen could sit down and enjoy the feeling of being on a seaside and enjoying a wood, a wooden dock, not necessarily concrete. I want to say that Oak Harbor, in reference to other communities I've known, that the citizens bent over backwards to try and share that waterfront with their, their Navy neighbors and neighbors who weren't as fortunate to have waterfront property. So the intention there was that some young Navy family or some senior citizen could sit down there and enjoy the otters, watch the eagles and just partake of that. Concrete is not equal to wooden decks and docks when it comes to kind of a therapy for the, for the individual. So enough of that. I just, I wanted, wanted to say I appreciate the effort and I have some paperwork here for you.
Thank you, Mr. Hancock.
And I did include a picture of Old Town Oak Harbor in 1940 showing that, yeah, they had docks and they were not obstructing access to the marina, which didn't exist
Is that a picture of you walking alongside the road there? Yeah, okay. Thank you, Mr. Hancock. Anyone else for a public comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing in reference to the shoreline master program. Bring back our senior planner, Ethan Spoo. Turn to the city council for questions, comments, starting with Councilmember Savadis.
We've been through this several times. Thank you, Mayor. The dock thing, we addressed that at the last meeting. And as it stands right now, that, that would be a permitted use?
That's how it's been included in the draft because that's what the Planning Commission had recommended and we wanted to represent, correctly represent that recommendation to you.
Okay, and I guess I'll support that. I just still don't see, knowing how shallow that is, how it's viable. But can you address, and maybe this will probably come up anyway, but I'll go ahead and ask the questions just from my education, the frequency with which the DOE could retest or why it might have only tested in August?
You know, I think I'll just go ahead and defer to David Pater on that question.
Okay, thank you.
David Pater, shoreline planner, Department of Ecology in Bellevue. I've been working with the city since the get-go, helping their master program. I guess first, a little bit of background on how this all came about. Ethan contacted me with a request from a property owner out there, Mr. Friend, questioning whether or not part of his property was considered a wetland. So he submitted all this information to document that it wasn't a wetland. Included in that bit of information, that packet of information was this salinity data on the ditch. So that's sort of the source and why it sort of came out late in the process. So in the end, we removed the particular parcel from the shoreline jurisdiction that Mr. Friend was feeling it wasn't a wetland because we got an adequate amount of data. So, and the person who collected the data, he's a wetland specialist trained in, you know, looking at these various plants and these areas for ordinary high watermark determination to determine shoreline jurisdiction and high watermark. And salinity was sort of part of the puzzle out there that he sampled. But he also had to look at tidal influence. He had to look at vegetation as one of the folks testified. He also witnessed some saltwater fish in the ditch, sculpins, and also some marine algae. And also, I think it's been confirmed that the tide gate doesn't seem to really function properly out there. So that's one of the big issues. And Paul is willing to come out and do another round of sampling and analysis, looking at all the other factors I just mentioned, to see whether there has been a change there or it's different at a different time of year. So I, I think it's advisable to, to, to do that, to get another sort of snapshot of, of the issues out there, so.
Okay, thank you. But I think it's important to recognize that as things change, I think it was in a government services meeting, we started talking about low-lying wetlands. And even if those are created, there may be times where we've created a, or the salinity has increased because of maybe some of our doing. So I'll wait, I may come back to some other questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Muns.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Spoo, is there a deadline that we need to pass this resolution?
There's a statutory deadline set out in the Shoreline Management Act, RCW 9058. That's December 1st of this year. In talking with the Department of Ecology, if things get pushed past that point, that's a pretty common and frequent occurrence across jurisdictions in, in the state of Washington. They're, they seem to be most concerned about the project continuing to move forward and not stalling out.
Follow-on question is, then the five residents who now are part of the shoreline management, if we pass this and it ends up with a salinity test and some other ones on this time of year, that it isn't classified as that, then would we just amend it? Or is it better not to, I mean, I need to know kind of the parameters, if we should go ahead and pass it to make the deadline and then go back and amend it if it won't be part of it? Or is it better to accept most of it, but then leave out this section? I'm just a little confused on that.
Sure. So, I mean, I think it's because you're, tonight, what we're requesting that you do is approve by resolution, you're sort of making the statement that you intend to adopt by resolution at a, excuse me, by ordinance at a later date. So it would be possible to adopt this shoreline master program in its whole as it's presented to you tonight, then have the Department of Ecology go out to the East Ditch, test it again and see what the salinity is. If it's found that that salinity is no longer high enough to constitute a tidal water, then we can simply amend the maps prior to final adoption of this by, by the city council. So that would mean that if, if all of those sequence of events takes place, that would mean that the next time we came back to you, if you approved it tonight, we would be asking you to approve a map that does not include the, the East Ditch in shoreline jurisdiction and the adjacent properties in it.
So, and that would be the step in between before we would do a real ordinance? So it'd be the resolution, it shows our intent, we're moving forward, but we can amend the map depending on new evidence of testing before we actually do the ordinance, which would be concrete, solid, this is it? Okay?
That's correct.
One, that's it, I've lost my other question. I'll have to think of it maybe. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Campbell.
Thank you. I have several questions. Did you say that this testing was done in 2011 or 2012?
It was 2011. It was August of 2011.
August 2011?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'm, I'm sort of going to bounce around here. What's the target date for adoption?
The target date for, well, the target date for approval is tonight.
Yeah.
But no later than December 1st. I wouldn't say that we have a target date for final adoption because we need to send the document off to the Department of Ecology, let them review it, let them do their thing. Then they'll tell us if there's any other changes that are required to the document. So.
So it's sometime after they send it back to us?
That's right.
Okay.
I, I mean, typically, typically maybe two, two, three months, something like that.
More like six.
More like six?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, longer. Has the Planning Commission seen this? I mean, has the Planning Commission seen the comments that we're hearing tonight?
We had sent a letter to the affected property owners the week before the Planning Commission, the last Planning Commission meeting. The last Planning Commission meeting was September 25 and we sent this letter to the property owners the week before that, inviting them to show up to the Planning Commission meeting. I don't believe that any of them showed up at that meeting, but there was a couple of them at your October 24 workshop as well as the November 7 city council meeting.
But the question is, did the Planning Commission hear the comments? We've heard several comments tonight. Several of them came out at the meeting that you had.
I don't believe they heard the comments from the property owners, but we, we're sure that we let them know about this issue prior to them making a recommendation on it.
As a side comment, how can we do anything this tonight if we don't have a recommendation by the Planning Commission? I know we can do almost anything we want to, but if, if it goes through the Planning Commission and they've not seen these comments, could that possibly change their recommendation?
You're talking about the comments from the property owners?
Yeah.
It could. I mean, that's, that would be for them to deliberate.
You mind if I add something?
Sure.
Mr. Campbell, I think an important point here is, is that the, the properties based upon the determination of Department of Ecology are in the shoreline jurisdiction. And that would be regardless of the testimony offered by the neighbors. As, as concerned as what the neighbors are, that concern can't change the designation as provided to us by the Department of Ecology. In other words, sir, that the testimony by the citizens that the Planning Commission couldn't have taken those properties out of the shoreline jurisdiction.
Okay.
Yeah.
But that doesn't seem to be the question tonight. The question tonight is how are we going to deal with these issues that have been brought up by the citizens that apparently, based on what I've heard, are valid issues? We're talking as, as, again, as I'm hearing, we're talking about the council doing something tonight. With the caveat on our, I'm going to call it approval, I don't know if that's the right word, but on our approval that we have to go, we have to be asking DOE some questions.
And you're exactly correct, sir. That's the strategy that we've laid out for the council as, as, as the best mechanism to address the neighborhood concern. Because the concern came to us through no fault of their own, at, at this particular point in the process, it's appropriate for us to, as we have this evening, brief the council on those concerns, make available for you the, the minutes, or the notes rather, from last week's meeting and indicate to you a course of action by which you could try to address that on behalf of the citizens, namely, asking the Department of Ecology to come back and redo that test. And so I guess my, when you started your line of questioning, sir, related to the Planning Commission and whether or not the commission had made a recommendation, yes, they've been engaged in this process for the entire two and a half years and have made a recommendation to you and to the rest of the council that includes these properties as part of the, of the shoreline jurisdiction. Because that's the only recommendation frankly that, that they could make because that is part of the shoreline jurisdiction. So the mechanism to address it is, is tonight, not at the time of the Planning Commission.
Okay, thank you. One more question. The tide gate that we're talking about, if we, if we put together a plan to fix that tide gate, is that going to mitigate, mitigate this issue with the saltwater and all that kind of stuff? Can we, can we do something with the tide gate that will fix the problem as, as, as the citizens are seeing it?
I'm going to defer to Joe Stoll, our city engineer, on that.
Hello, how's everybody doing tonight? I've taken time over the last couple of days to look at the tide gate to see what the issues might be with it. I actually went out there yesterday when there was 12 and a half high tide and walked out there myself to look at it. It appears to be functioning fine. It is a check valve, that's what a tide gate is. You have to understand that the water that does pass through it can contain debris from time to time. And our staff goes out on a regular basis per our NPDES permit. We have to go out after every storm and inspect all the outfalls, this being one of them. And we have a regular schedule where we go out and inspect this one in particular and we have records of, of those visits. In, in short form, I, I believe the tide gate's functioning as it's supposed to, knowing that some water does pass. that some water does pass coming inland from that, but on an infrequent basis, and, and that it is maintained.
Thank you. I have one more question. No, not a question, a comment. Based on what I've heard, what you want us to do is approve this tonight, and you are going to send a letter to DOE and ask them to come and, and do their test again before the final process is done? What I've also heard, and this is, I'm, please, don't anybody take this wrong, what I've also heard is that you had a meeting with the citizens, and the only thing that came out of that meeting that you can do anything about is send a letter to DOE. The rest of the comments here that they've, that they've shared tonight, there's not a lot we can do about it. That's what I've heard. Thank you.
Mayor Proton, begone.
Thank you, honor. Mr. Spool, on the East Ditch, according to the Department of Ecology, they consider this area as a tidal water. Is this area outside the shoreline designation or shoreline jurisdiction? Which means that it's beyond the 200 feet from the ordinary high watermark? So is it outside the 200 feet, Harry?
Well, that, that's, we, we don't think so. We think that it's in, because that ditch, if it's classified as a tidal water, then becomes an ordinary high watermark in and of itself. So 200 feet either side of the ditch, east and west of the ditch, is then considered to be in shoreline jurisdiction.
Okay. And, and the reason why the Department of Ecology considered it as tidal water, because of the measurable salinity in the water?
That's correct.
And that ditch?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Ombur.
Thank you, Mayor. I have some questions here, but before I do that, I believe it'd be appropriate to enter the Dillard addition neighborhood East Ditch meeting, question their exhibit into the record. And so therefore I would make that motion, that the document dated November the 15th, 2012, Dillard's addition neighborhood East Ditch meeting, and we can also caption that as Exhibit A, if you care to. That would be my motion.
A second. A motion and a second by Councilmember Campbell. Any, go back to Councilmember Ombur to speak to the motion.
All right. Motion speaks for itself.
Okay. Any discussion in reference to adding that into the record? Okay. Seeing none, all those is in favor of entering that into the record, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, and it's entered.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Now, I have a couple of questions here. There, there was a public comment about the water quality in that wetlands, the Friends' Marsh, and would either you or Mr. Peter comment on what the value of that marsh is, including the ditch, with respect to stormwater control and water quality? Either one of you?
Yeah, I mean, on, on the water quality issue, I think I'm gonna go ahead and defer to Mr. Peter on that question.
Well, I think wetlands in, in general provide a certain amount of water quality benefit for, for treating, especially in some cases, stormwater coming off into these areas. So I think it, it does provide some, some mitigation of, if there wasn't a wetland there and the, the water was just coming off of streets and into that ditch, it would be much more contaminated than, than what you're probably seeing out there. I'm not sure how much testing is done out there on a regular basis, or, but, yeah, it does provide a certain amount of benefit.
Okay, thank you. It, it is, in my experience, a, a natural filtration system, at least an initial filtration system for us, removing a lot of the hydrocarbon petroleum-based things, unfortunately not any of the heavy, heavy metal items, though. And then, the other thing, this is a question for you also, in the course of testing, and it sounds like, it sounds like to me that you tested only in an isolated area, is it possible that there is residue in the soil in that whole vicinity? Because much of it is hydraulic fill, which came out of the bay several years ago, and would that, would that soil continue to hold the salt? And also, can you get migration salt spray in there? You know, I've lived on shorelines before, and the windows and cars collect salt. Help me out with that, maybe there are other sources of salt.
Well, I'm not sure if I'm the total authority, I'm kind of lapping more into expertise of the, of the individual who actually went out there and did the sampling. It's certainly possible you could get salt from the wetland. I'm not sure about the salt spray having an influence. I know there were, was a number of points that were tested, it wasn't just one.
Okay.
Um, he did a series of tests up to where the ditch kind of makes a, an extreme right turn, and that's sort of the, the limit of what we put on jurisdiction, based on the salinity and the, and the influence of the, of the tidal, tidal influence and the vegetation, et cetera.
It doesn't sound like he went into the large pond section.
Is that much further up?
Uh, yes, it is.
Oh, no, no, I don't.
It's kind of the headwater for that.
No, no, there was one test, one salinity test done at a point further up from the junction.
Yeah.
And so it was cut off at the junction scene, or, or this, where it does a quick right turn, which seemed to be the, the most logical place to say this was the limit of jurisdiction based on the information that, that Mr. Anderson collected in August.
And then, final question. And this is probably for Mr., for our city engineer, hiding behind the curtain. And, and actually, we have the right people here, all, all three or four of you here, to answer this question. Is it possible to control the, the check valve or the floodgate, to allow the water level to be reduced in anticipation of a storm event, so that we can actually have more storage volume when we have a storm event and we don't have this overflow into the streets like we've had this last week? Can you, can you manipulate the water level and still be in compliance with DOE regulations?
You know, the way it stands right now, it all works by gravity. So as the, the water level drops out in the harbor, any water that's inland of that would drain out. As the water level raises out in the harbor, the, the check valve closes and keeps it from going inland. To do, to forcefully take water and push it out would require some sort of a pump, and it's not set up for that.
No, I, I understand that, but if, if, the theory is that you're saying that the water, the check valve works all the time, so that means water's only flowing out when the tide is down, and then the, the valve closes automatically, so there's no infiltration theoretically into that. So then theoretically, you don't have the backup in the, in the, in the ditch or the pond area. But is that really happening, or are we getting backflow? That sounds like that's part of the argument right now, or the discussion, that we're, we're getting potential backflow in there, which is entered, if we are, is introducing salt and the, these fish, you know, the sculpins, whatever you have. And it's also reducing stormwater retention capacity.
You know, my, I'd have to go and look at it closer, but my, my gut feeling is that it, that the tide gate's working as it's supposed to, that there's always, with any tide gate like that, there's always the potential of getting a small branch or something in it that would allow some water to, to move, go the wrong direction inland. I'm not sure how to, how to correct that any other way.
Okay. Well, I would be supportive of, of having the testing so that we had a definitive decision answering the questions, and also, and I don't mean this to be sarcastic by any stretch of the imagination, I would rather not go by gut feeling on the function of that tide gate, but see if there is an actual monitoring system. And maybe you are doing that, maybe you guys are monitoring and, and it isn't coming back.
We, we are. We have, we do regular maintenance on it, and we go out and make sure that it's functioning as it's supposed to.
So you're, it sounds like you're very convinced that we are not getting significant out of that.
If I'm not allowed to use my gut feeling, not just kidding. I would say that it's, it's working as it's supposed to, and we're not getting significant flow back with what I know right now.
Then how would we be getting salt in there?
Uh, I couldn't say right now, it could be saltwater intrusion from water passing through the soil, it could be all the other items that you already mentioned.
Thank you, that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Good questions. Councilmember Eisen.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm, I'm not an expert, but it sounds, it stands to reason that this tide gate wouldn't necessarily be foolproof, right? I mean, we're, we're dealing with a huge body of water. Some saltwater is gonna get in, right? I mean, does, does the testing allow for a reasonable amount of mingling, or are we expecting a perfect seal?
Well, what, what I've been told from Mr. Anderson is the, the minimum is like .5 for salinity, for determining whether or not there's a, there's some tidal influence or not. So it's, it's a fairly low threshold, so...
Can you, so, can you break down .5 for me?
Can I what?
Can you break down .5 for me?
Breakdown?
.5 of what?
Well, let me, let me look in my notes here. Um, I'm, again, I'm not the, I'm not the person who went out there and did the sampling.
Is Mr. Anderson here?
Yeah, and it, I mean, immediately what I'm looking at, I, I just don't have that information.
Okay. Like parts per?
Yeah, it's, oh, it's, it's in there. Well, there you go. It looks like it's parts per thousand.
Okay. Thank you, Robin. Okay, thank you. And?
Just to add into that, I've looked at the state law on that a couple of different times in the past week or two. It's, I believe, Washington Administrative Code 173 dash 22 dash 030, and it talks about...
You're such a show-off.
Zero, 0.5 parts per thousand. So that's, that's where it's from.
Okay. My goodness. So if we approve the resolution as is and ask for further testing, presumably that would come back before we adopt any final version. Would that theoretically have zero impact? Because we wouldn't be adopting anything final until we get the results of that? Is that, is that the recommendation? Or like, what, what would be, would that be the preference versus holding off altogether until we get the results of further testing?
Well, there's, you know, in conversations with Mr. Peter, there's no reason to believe that the Department of Ecology can't get out there in a pretty timely manner and measure the salinity in that ditch, so there wouldn't be any reason why that couldn't be done before the final adoption.
Okay. That makes sense, since it's gonna take months for the, the actual SMP to be reviewed anyway. Are we just thinking we're...
That's right.
Say it in time, best to imagine it.
I mean, Mr. Peter's right, they have, Department of Ecology has its own public process, they have at least a, a 30-day comment period of their own to, for this SMP, so... Sure.
Sure, please.
Yeah, let, let's say the council passes the resolution tonight to forward the SMP on to Ecology, and Ethan puts a package, submits it to us by end of the year. We have to run our own public process, which probably most likely it'll be just a 30-day comment period, but it takes us a couple of months to get ramped up, we have to put all the documents on the internet, send out to the mailing list, so it takes a little time. And what's probably, in most cases, what happens is, there'll invariably be a few malingering issues that will come out as either recommended or required changes of the SMP, that the Department of Ecology would send back to the city as a, sort of a conditional approval. And then the city council would look at those changes, and the changes could deal with the ditch after we get this more information, possibly changing the map. And that's when you would do, as Ethan has indicated, sort of a final adoption if you agree with those changes. And then the, the, that documentation of final approval of the changes of the SMP would come back to Ecology, and we'd issue our final action. And then the SMP would be effective 14 days after the date of that final action.
Okay. It sounds like the Dillard residents and the staff, it, it sounds like we're all on the same page here, because I'm looking at the staff's preference is to not have the ditch in the shoreline jurisdiction as well. So it sounds like we all want the same thing here. So what, what would the harm be in, if your DOE can get out there quickly, what would the harm be in having them do their testing and wait for the results before approving the SMP?
If by approval you mean the, the resolution that we're talking about tonight?
Right.
Um, I, I wouldn't characterize it any particular harm, I would just say that would probably push the process back that many days or weeks until the testing happened.
Can I help with that? One of the things that we take very seriously is meeting the statutory deadlines established by the state for our various planning efforts. So for instance, whether it's a GMA update to our comprehensive plan, or in this case, the major update to the shoreline master program, of your Planning Commission, your community, and your staff have worked very hard to get us to the point of, of meeting that December 1st deadline. We think we have a way for us to stay on that deadline and actually meet the state law requirement, and, and that has some significance to us.
So we're killing two birds with one stone, basically? All right, I'm ready to make a motion.
Well, let me go around one more time and see if there's any more questions or comments. Councilmember Muntz?
Um, a question I have is, basically, this is a new designation because DOE is requiring on the map that we include those five properties that touch the ditch, if I'm not mistaken. So we don't really have a say, I mean, we could say, we don't want to do it, but we'll be fine, because they're saying with their findings, they have to be included, that ditch has to be included in the SMP, correct?
Yes, I mean, it meets the minimum threshold under the law, the 0.5 parts per thousand. So in that sense, none of us, DOE, the city, the residents, none of us have any choice in that matter. It either meets or it doesn't.
I mean, we can be very adamant, defiant, saying, no, we're not going to do this, but then we'll end up reaping repercussions that we do not want.
Assuming that it is a salt, assuming that it is a tidal water, if we somehow decided we were gonna refuse to adopt that area as a, a shoreline or a shoreline, then DOE would come back at a later date probably and say, sorry, it actually is, so...
And if I understand right, by approving the resolution, we have this period that they will come test earlier, because we are moving in the process, instead of trying to stop it, we make our deadline. And then the map, if it, testing comes out, what we would like it to come out, it may not as far as the salinity, then it would be removed before we go to the final, final stage, correct?
That's correct.
All right. Then one more question. I think they had a valid point on about the liability risk. I know we have our, our water prisons around town, if it has so many inches of water, it's gotta be protected so the kids can't fall into it, or it has to have enough of a slope that they can get out. Has that issue, I mean, this seems like sort of a new issue, or one that we've glanced over and didn't consider until we made it a park and we have more people down there? Do you have an answer or could get back at some point about that?
I don't have an answer, but I, I think possibly our city engineer might be able to answer that question for you.
I keep stepping up from behind the curtain.
I, I don't know if I have an answer for that either. If there's a need for, for fencing around it, I suppose we could look into that, but I don't know that that's the case at this point.
Might not hurt to ask MRSC if that's a real risk or not, or whatever, just to have the check in the box. And one more question. In the letter that we send to DOE to request the testing, is it possible just to ask... the testing, is it possible just to ask, so we have the check in the box about that this soil was picked up from the bottom of the harbor and used as fill, what percent could have a concentration of salt in it? And then when, you know, you have your blustery days and you see the foam and the salt spray coming over, that that also may play a part. I know we don't really know, but does it hurt to ask that question formally in a letter when we ask them to come back and test, just to be sure? Uh, some of the questions Mr. Omburg asked, if it does play a part, because I have no idea about that science.
Certainly, we can ask the question in the, in the letter and see what the, the response is.
I would appreciate it, and at least we've got that check in the box that that question has been asked. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilor Cervantes.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. We talk about, we've been talking about salinity and most of the, you said there were other points that were considered, the flora and the fauna, we got fish, we have plant life. And do you know what weight those items were given? Because those wouldn't just crop up overnight. I mean, if we had an influx of tide water, that would not contribute all of a sudden to the propagation of saltwater vegetation. So I think it absolutely, there's two motions to be made here, and I support both. The first is obviously to move forward with the resolution. The second is to go out there and retest. I'd be curious if you can, Mr. Peter, weigh in. Is there any weighting given to the salinity in the water vise, the plant life or animal life that was found as well? In the end, it's probably moot, because...
Well, I mean, I, I really don't know the full answer to your question, first of all. But as Ethan says, the, the salinity rates are, are in state administrative code, so that carries a lot of weight on its own. But the, um, the other factors, such as tidal influence, vegetation, um, pheasant, presence of certain species, fish, are, are talked about a bit in the definition of ordinary high watermark in the Shoreline Management Act. So tho- those are important, too. Um, you know, it's, it's really a question for, unfortunately, for Mr. Anderson to, to answer, um, to see if there is equal weight given. But obviously, if you don't have the salinity over time, you're probably not gonna have the other things.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, turn back to Councilor Eisen.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to direct staff to... I'm kind of doing this in the opposite order for...
Should we do the, you wanna do the resolution first?
I don't really.
Here's the recommendation side, if that helps.
Trying to figure out how to... Oh, thank you. That's perfect. I move to direct staff to contact DOE and request that it measure the salinity in the east ditch again. And depending on the results, staff will respond accordingly.
I've got a motion.
Second?
Yeah, and a second from Councilor Cervantes. Any further discussion in reference to that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. We've got that direction.
Excellent. Um, and I also move, uh, that we approve Resolution Number 12 dash 30, approving the shoreline master program.
Got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Muntz. Any further discussion in reference to that motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. That passes unanimously. Okay. Our Director of Development Services, Mr. Powers.
Approving the proposed shoreline master program? Is that what I should have said?
I'm sorry? No, no, no corrections. Uh, I just wanted to just take a moment, if I could, Mayor and council, uh, in addition to be able to quote RCW and, and Washington Administrative Code at the drop of the hat, uh, Mr. Spoo has been an outstanding project manager for more than the last two and a half years on this project, and just wanted to publicly recognize his accomplishments.
You bet. Awesome.
Thank you. It really was a group effort, though.
And thank you, Mr. Gifford, for being here as well, as thank you, Mr. Peter, for being here. And we, uh, obviously, you can see that the council, uh, has questions and concerns in reference to that. And we look forward to verifying and making sure that anything that we do have in the shoreline jurisdiction is, uh, correct and accurate. So we look forward to working with you here shortly. At this time, we're gonna go ahead and just take a quick recess, and we'll reconvene in just five minutes. Okay, let's go ahead and reconvene, uh, this regular meeting of the Oak Harbor City Council for this Tuesday, November 20th. And we turn to the podium and we see our Finance Director, Mr. Doug Merriman, at the podium for our next agenda item, which is a public hearing on the 2013-2014 biennial budget. Mr. Merriman?
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Uh, Agenda Bill Number Three is a scheduled public hearing and first reading of our ordinance for the 2013-2014 biennial budget. Uh, just a brief update on where we are at. Uh, since our last discussion we had, primarily, we're focusing on the general fund right now. Um, originally, when we started, the comparison between revenues and the expenditures requested for the general fund by the department heads, we had about a $1.4 to $1.5 million imbalance, where expenditures requested exceeded revenues. Uh, since that time, based on some directives from council and from the mayor, uh, we, all the department's heads have gone back and reviewed their department budgets, and we've come forward with, uh, just a tentative proposal right now on what our general fund budget would be for that biennial period. I provided a couple of things, uh, at your places for this evening. Uh, two of those are, first, a, a listing of those cuts that we're proposing to implement to bring the revenues and expenditures in balance. There's a two-page list that I've broken out by department. Uh, the second is just our current worksheet on where we're at from line item detail for the general fund. Uh, for those items, basically, what they come down to, the changes that we've proposed, uh, for revenues are an update in our property tax. If you look at the two-page listing, uh, you'll see the very first section is revenues. Uh, we got our final numbers from the county. Uh, we actually had an increase in our assessed valuation due to the Goldie Road annexation and some other areas. So that added some additional revenues to our property tax for 2013 and 14. In addition, we applied for and we're going to be receiving a CADA grant. This is a grant for domestic violence expenditures in our police department. Uh, I won't go down the entire list, but primarily, uh, the areas that we focused on, we have six positions that either through attrition or reallocating of staff that we will not be budgeting for this next biennial period. Uh, in addition to that, uh, we've staggered out our computer replacement schedule. We used to replace computers on a three-year schedule, but we were finding that not all the time, even though computers can be outdated quickly, depending on the department using them, uh, we're able to push that out to four and five and even six years. Uh, so for the next biennial period, we'll be, uh, going to a 50% funding rate compared to what we've done in the past. Uh, both the fire and police department, uh, went back to their areas, and instead of doing a bulk purchase of all equipment in the next biennial period, we're gonna be staggering that out as well. Um, both departments did a great job of going back and reallocating, uh, those purchases that they need, and that accounted for quite a bit of savings. Finally, we have some projects, unfortunately, we'll have to defer. We do have a lighting project, uh, we were going to do here at City Hall, and the police department, that will defer those until a later date. Also, we are working to see what grant options are available, uh, to complete those. It's better to wait until we have that whole package put together and bring that forward to council as a budget adjustment at a future date, rather than to try to budget now when we don't have all those pieces put together. Uh, the rest of the list is as shown. The total adjustments we come up with, uh, at this time, for 2013, we have 1.544 million, and for 2014, our adjustment total is 1.619 million. Essentially, with these adjustments in place, we're balanced in the general fund without using any reserves. And that's a pretty good accomplishment. And as you can see, there's a good list of departments here. And for each one of those departments, there's a department head and a lot of staff that did a lot of work in putting these numbers together. And that's really gotten us to where we are.
Thank you, Mr. Merriman. Can you touch on what you anticipate going forward after this evening? Obviously, we're gonna conduct the public hearing, and you'll, we'll probably see this again on December 4th.
Okay. Uh, there is a, an ordinance, I also provided a draft ordinance. This ordinance will appear for council with a public hearing on December 4th. Um, it will hopefully be our last public hearing and our last discussion on the biennial budget. Uh, we'll have it balanced for all funds. Uh, the only areas we really have work left to do, uh, are the arterial fund. And there's a little bit of work, uh, still to fine tune what our projected archaeology costs are, uh, going into that biennial period. So on December 4th, I'll be bringing this back to council, uh, for adoption.
Thank you, Mr. Merriman. We'll go ahead and conduct that public hearing now. Anyone wishing to comment in reference to our 2013-2014 biennial budget can do so now. We're gonna have you at the podium. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing for now, but we'll have an opportunity to comment again when we bring up the same topic on December 4th. I'll turn to the council, uh, for council comments or questions, starting with Councilor Eisen.
No questions. Thank you.
Councilor Omburg?
I'll defer my questions and comments until December the 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Pagel.
No questions right now. Thank you.
Councilor Campbell?
I have no questions.
Yeah, Councilor Muntz?
I have one question. Sorry. I know. I'm just... Um, Mr. Merriman, under animal control, um, the, um, I think it's RDF that we have out, or RFD, will that make a difference in, in that budget, depending on, on the outcome of that? Who takes the contract and all the, um, implementation of that? Or is it kind of a non-entity?
At, at this point, it's not something that we can quantify. I believe we were looking at an extension in some contracts and different things there. Um, we probably still have another several months to go on those negotiations and that. And if there's any change, then we would come back and amend the budget for those.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilor Cervantes.
Thank you, Mayor. No real comments. I appreciate the work here on everybody's part. I, I definitely am reading through this field for the Parks Department. There's some big cuts and some big hits there. Um, thank you.
Anything further? If not, we'll, uh, look forward to December 4th. And thank you, Mr. Merriman, for the job you're doing. It's, uh, and continue to sharpen the pencil. You're doing great. See you again. Thanks.
Mayor, um, probably because this, this was advertised as a, as a public hearing, if we wanna con, uh, have a motion to continue the public hearing to December 4th, then we don't have to re-advertise.
Okay. We can, yep.
I move we continue the public hea- hearing on the biennial budget, 2013 and 2014, to the December 4th meeting.
Second.
Got a motion and a second from Councilmember Campbell to continue this public hearing to the December 4th meeting. Uh, any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All those in favor of this, uh, continuing the public hearing signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Then we'll continue that public hearing, and I appreciate that. Dr. Court. Uh, and speaking of Dr. Court, uh, Dr. Court's gonna present our next agenda item, which is the, uh, Resolution 1227, which is the interim out-of-class assignments. Dr. Court?
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is a follow-up to the, um, discussion that, uh, that you held at the last council meeting, to, to amend our employee policy manual with respect to, um, how our, um, interim out-of-class assignments are, are handled. Um, based on that discussion, which, uh, uh, we, we, the instructions that we got from the council toward the end of that discussion were to sort of, uh, take what we heard from you and, and do our best to, to match, uh, with the intent that you had expressed, um, through, uh, through, through that discussion. And, and as a result, the, uh, the language that we have come up with for your consideration tonight, um, is to, uh, slightly amend the existing, um, line that is in, uh, that section of our, of our employee policy manuals, uh, manual, to read interim slash out-of-class assignments. We added the word generally in, in, out of respect for the, the next sentence, limited to 90, and we changed business to calendar days. And then extensions require approval by the mayor or city administrator. And then the, the proposed, uh, new line would be interim department head, and then defined within the, in the parenths, uh, what, what is the department head, and then, and city administrator appointments by the mayor are limited to two terms of 90 calendar days each. Extensions beyond two terms require, and again, this is one of those questions for you tonight, uh, we put confirmation in there, but I know there was some, um, some, uh, uh, support for the word approval in that, in that line. So either one is, is, is fine, one being confirming more of the person, um, um, the approval implying more of the extension itself, and then by, by a majority vote of the city council. Um, those are, that, that's our suggestion for, uh, based on the discussion at the last meeting. And, uh, if we can help with answering any questions, we, we certainly will.
Yeah. This time, we'll go ahead and turn to the public and see if the public has any comments regarding this agenda item. If so, we can take those now. Okay. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment on this agenda item, turn to the city council for any comments or questions, starting with Councilmember Cervantes.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we covered this fairly thoroughly last time and came to a consensus. I would be prepared to make a motion. I retyped, with the exception of, I think, one or two words, the motion as you see it here before you, and I have that here. Um, once again, my intent here is just to strongly encourage the speedy, uh, continuum of our leadership positions, specifically in the department head positions. And once everybody has this in front of them, I would like to make a motion. I move to approve Resolution Number 1227, replacing the last paragraph of Section 4.06 of our employee policy manual with the following paragraph. Interim out-of-class assignments are limited to 90 calendar days. Extensions require approval by the mayor or city administrator. Interim department head, defined as the directors of Public Works, Development Services and Finance, the city attorney, and the fire and police chiefs, and city administrator appointments by the mayor are limited to two terms of 90 calendar days each. Extensions beyond two terms requires confirmation by a majority vote of the city council.
We've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And we have a second from Councilor Omburg. Go back to Councilor Cervantes to speak to the motion.
Once again, Mayor, we covered it very extensively. The only change, I believe, in this, besides some capitalization and what Mr. Court had prepared in the agenda bill, is the elimination of the word generally, if anyone is looking for a distinction. Uh, I, I think that's it. The other thing we worked on, and I went back and watched the video, we went back and forth on approval versus confirmation. The, uh, communication from the MRSC... The communication from the MRC, they preferred the word confirmation only in that we're not confirming the appointment by the mayor. We are confirming, and in essence approving, but confirming the extension of the term. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Councilmember Campbell.
I was involved in that conversation last week, or the last time we had a meeting, pretty heavily. But when I leave these meetings, I'm not done thinking about things. It's not that, yeah, I know I drove some things last time and I wanted some words changed, and they've been changed in the thing that Mr. Cervantes just read. But after leaving here, doing some research on this situation, I have decided that I'm not going to vote yes on this. I'm going to vote no. And I'm going to vote no for about three or four reasons. The first one is, the citizens of Oak Harbor voted in our present mayor expecting him to do a job. The RCW, the state of Washington, says the mayor has certain responsibilities, one of which is hiring the direct, what I'll call the directors, the city attorney and at those levels. It's his responsibility, and it's not anybody else's. And it's not anybody else's to jump in the middle of that. This particular motion talks about the 90 days. I believe that the RCW's intent is that the mayor's responsibility is at all levels of that process, and he does not need our permission, approval, nor confirmation to make a change in the 90 days. That's his responsibility to do that. I had a question, and I've not asked this of anybody else, and I'm not asking for an answer, but I just cannot, in my brain, figure out, let's say that we go for six months and we still have not replaced a position. The intent of this has been advertised, we just want to keep the process moving. Okay, we can't keep the process moving at the end of six months, so what are we going to do about it? There's nothing that the city council can do about it, except say, "Mr. Mayor, you didn't do your job." He is trying to put people in these positions. And that's, we ought to give him his response, we ought to give him our approval of doing that by not trying to get in his way. Now, with the out-of-class positions, I wouldn't like, I don't like that, I mean, it's there, but I don't like that process being included at the same time in the hiring of the city administrator and the managers and all that kind of stuff, because generally, out-of-class is at a lower level. It's at more down at the working level, under a supervisor or supervisor, something like that. The mayor doesn't hire those people. That's the managers and the management types at the working level. And I don't believe that the city council wants or should micromanage so much that we're down at the supervisor level telling a person how to do the job. If we have to tell a supervisor how to do the job, then we ought to be talking to the manager, because they're not apparently very good. I think I've said enough. I'm going to vote no. I think we ought to stay out of this process and allow the mayor to do the job like the state law and the city of Oak Harbor said to do it. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilmember Romberg.
Thank you, Mayor. Last council meeting, when we discussed this, we asked the acting city attorney to give us the definition of responsibilities. The council has the responsibility for policy and budget on the macro side of management and not on the micro side. And there is a little bit of overlap and a conflict in there, but in the course of that conversation and the, actually, I believe it was even a suggestion, a city attorney, that 60-day, excuse me, six months was reasonable and a reasonable time to conform with our policies that we have written into the handbook. And so, based on that, I thought, okay, there we go. There's six months. He's saying it's reasonable, sounds reasonable to me. And also, I don't think, I think maybe there's too much emphasis placed that this is a target toward this mayor. This is a policy that applies to all future mayors, not just this mayor, but other future mayors. And that's why it's a policy thing. I think it allows the mayor, in their thoughts about changing personnel and replacing them, to give that some upfront thought that maybe, you know, I've got six months to be doing this, I better start thinking about doing it now before I send somebody down the road. So I'm quite satisfied with the two extensions, excuse me, two terms at 90 days, and I'll go with the city, the acting city attorney. Now, he may comment. I'm not testifying for you, Mr. Weed.
Well, I guess the thing that I would confirm is that in state law, there is fairly clear language that essentially says the executive branch, in other words, the mayor has the authority and the power of hiring and firing and appointment of personnel. The mayor is essentially the chief personnel officer for the city. And language in your municipal code, particularly that that's quoted under the beginning of your agenda bill, under the caption "Authority," confirms that authority. The council, as a legislative body, on the other hand, clearly has the authority over budget. Councils do have the authority to enact personnel policies, and that's what this amendment is. The council also has authority, under state law and in your code, to confirm the individuals who are appointed by your mayor. And so, the reason that I said, well, there isn't any bright line for how long you can have appointed personnel in place before the council's authority to confirm begins to be eroded, but it seemed to me a reasonable period of time would be six months. So that's a little bit more of the background of why I said what I said, but once again, there is no case law or other legal authority that I'm aware of in the state of Washington that says can't be beyond six months, or it can't be beyond 90 days, or it can't be beyond even one year. So I think, but I do think, and this is, I guess, more of a, in a personal opinion than anything else, based upon my experience, is that what council's considering here tonight is a reasonable compromise between the competing interests or the divergent interests of the legislative versus the executive branch.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. Anyone else? We have a motion on the floor. It was Councilmember Campbell? Did you? No? We have a motion on the floor. No? Are we, Councilmember Eisen?
Okay.
Okay. And motion before you. All those in favor of the motion before you signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Okay. That motion does pass. Thank you, Dr. Court. As we take a look at our agenda, our next agenda item, we have back at the podium our interim city engineer, Joe Stoll, for Resolution 1233, the complete facilities plan for Windjammer vicinity as defined in either two resolutions. Mr. Stoll.
Hi. What I have tonight is the results from the fieldwork that was approved to be performed by city council at their October 16th meeting, which set up Amendment Number Five with Corolo. It allowed them to go out and do a series of borings and fieldwork to see the suitability of the different sites around the Windjammer vicinity. Included in that was the addition of the Carl Friends property, and they did some additional work there. I have with me tonight Brian Matson, who's hiding out behind me here with Corolo, and Jay Gordon with Geo Engineers, and I have Doug Slager is our surveyor. He's taking his hat off. They're all here to help with not only the presentation, but any questions that council may have. The ultimate goal of this is to consider two resolutions, one of two resolutions. One would be continuing with the Windjammer vicinity as it was approved in August and proceeding with the facilities plan effort. The second option that we're presenting tonight is a resolution that would direct staff to include Carl Friends property and expand the Windjammer vicinity and take that through the triple bottom line plus analysis and back out to the public, and then complete the facilities plan effort. With that, I will hand it over to Brian, who has a presentation here to explain the field results that we uncovered last, about, what, two, three weeks ago. Very well. Thank you. I'm here tonight, as Mr. Stoll said, to present the results and our initial conclusions that came out of the fieldwork that was recently completed through Amendment Five. I've got an awful lot of material here that I believe you have hopefully had a chance to peruse in advance of this meeting. I'll do my best to move through this quickly, but of course, if there are questions that come up, we'll do our best to answer those as we go. So our agenda is based on the objectives for this presentation tonight. First, I wanted to briefly review the scope and the purpose of Amendment Five, so everyone is clear in terms of what we were trying to achieve there. And then, as we talked about, the results of the fieldwork that was completed, there are three main elements of that fieldwork: topographical survey, environmental assessment, and geotechnical borings. And all of that data were summarized in the documents that you have in front of you. Then, take a step back and considering the technical information that we collected, try to summarize the estimated cost impacts associated with what we found and whether or not there would be substantial differences in cost between facilities that were located on the Charette site contained within the Windjammer vicinity versus this adjacent property that's going to be known as the Friends site tonight. And then ultimately, hopefully, we'll get some direction from council on the next steps. As Mr. Stoll said, there were two resolutions. One would direct us to complete the facilities plan based on the Windjammer vicinity as was defined earlier by Resolution 1217. The second resolution would be for us to expand the Windjammer vicinity to include this adjacent property, do additional public vetting of that property, and then complete the facilities plan based on a final location that results from that vetting. So just for everyone's edification, Resolution 1217 was passed in August, and it basically directed us to proceed with the facilities plan based on the Windjammer vicinity. There was substantial discussion at that meeting, if you will recall. A couple of bullet points that I have included on this slide, I believe that it was the council's wish for us to minimize space impacts on the Windjammer part to the extent that we could possibly do that, and largely to continue the public process moving forward to define the best location within the Windjammer vicinity for the facility, to find a layout and other desired uses and features of that facility that would consider the public's input. As you can see here, this colored sketch shows roughly 50 acres of property. We need three to four acres for the location of the facility. We've shown in red an option that was brought forth by the Charette process that we completed last summer, but that's not necessarily the final location that would be required, and so additional work has to happen in order for us to find that location. And that was really the focus of Amendment Five. Consistent with our approach throughout, we've tried to blend public input with technical detail in order to help find the best location. And so what we've done here in Amendment Five is to collect some of that technical detail. And again, that fieldwork consists of a Phase One topographical survey to establish elevations and flood protection requirements throughout the vicinity, environmental assessment to better define permitting and wetland mitigation requirements throughout the vicinity. And then, we've also completed some geotechnical borings to help us characterize the soils and better estimate design requirements and associated costs for that. So really, on the 16th, the direction, I should say that we were intending to complete that Amendment Five work regardless of the consideration of the Friends property. On October 16th, your direction was for us to include this adjacent property, the Friends property, in the scope of Amendment Five. And I believe largely our charge here has been to try to answer this question, does this Friends property provide technical or cost advantages that are relative to a facility on the Windjammer vicinity such that the council would wish to direct us to include that in the public vetting process that we've completed to date? So our current status, Phase One survey work has been completed. That's in attachment number one. Environmental assessment work was completed on, based on a site visit that was performed October 30th, and geotechnical borings were completed on October 30th and 31st. And at this point, I would like to make mention to the subconsultants that worked on this project with us. They did an outstanding job, in my opinion, of marshaling their efforts quickly and getting a lot of information pulled together so that we could do this final piece, which was the engineering analysis to consider that technical information, and compare three sites, really, for the purposes of this discussion. The Windjammer vicinity as it was defined in the Charette process, a facility on the Friends property, and then just for comparative purposes, I've also included the Windjammer vicinity that's an alternative that was shown to the council earlier as a way to try to illustrate how these site-specific cost factors can influence our decision-making process on that. So with that, I'm going to start by briefly describing the topographical survey work that was completed through Phase One. If you remember, there were two phases. The initial phase was based on aerial data and LiDAR elevations that are collected from that. And largely, that was intended to give us a better picture of what ground surface elevations were compared to key elevations such as the 100-year floodplain. So these are the two properties that we've considered, the Friends property, of course, to the southwest, and the Charette site within Windjammer vicinity to the north. And so what we found, based on the LiDAR elevations, is that the elevation of the ground surface, of course, varies throughout, but it's approximately seven feet, plus or minus, on the Friends property. It's a little bit higher on the east and a little bit lower on the west. The elevations on the Charette site are also variable, highest to the north, where they're about 15, and this is North American Vertical Datum 88 for reference, and lower to the south and approximately nine. So then, we've shown the extent of the 100-year floodplain, which is at 12.5 feet for reference. And as you can see, portions of, or all of, the sites that we've considered here lie within that 100-year floodplain. So what does that mean with respect to citing your facility? Well, there are regulations in place that govern development in the floodplain and a couple of things that I'd like to point out. First of all, the Orange Book, which is effectively ecology's rulebook for designing treatment facilities of this nature, requires we locate unit processes above the 100-year wave action or adequately protect those facilities from that 100-year flood or wave action. In other words, we need to be able to protect this facility above the 100-year floodplain and provide access to it so that it can do its job in the event of that occurrence. Of course, Oak Harbor Municipal Code also speaks to development within the floodplain, and I've listed a couple of citations from your code. I don't want to dwell on the requirements of the city's code, but I'll say that construction within those floodplains is allowed under the conditions that are listed here. There is a distinction for critical facilities. Wastewater treatment facilities are not specifically identified as critical facilities. Based on my experience in other communities where we Based on my experience in other communities where we cited wastewater treatment plants, within the 100-year floodplain, we have chosen to not define the entire site as a critical facility. We've chosen more to locate those facilities one foot above the 100-year floodplain, but for critical aspects of the facility such as electrical gear, et cetera, where it's much more cost-effective to elevate those on a housekeeping pad, provide that three feet of clearance, which gives you extra level of support and reliability there. So that's some basis for what would need to be accomplished at either of these sites to deal with the floodplain issue. Excuse me. Okay, so just to summarize, portions or all of the sites are within the floodplain, as I mentioned. So we would recommend elevating the grade and/or structures to 13.5. And again, as I mentioned, providing additional protection for those electrical facilities. The southern portions of the Windjammer vicinity sites must be elevated approximately three feet based on the elevations that we collected. So that would require some sort of retaining wall or sloped fill to the southern portion of the site, which we believe can be accomplished in a relatively straightforward manner. Existing grade at the Friend property averages about six and a half feet below the 100-year floodplain. So there would be flood protection requirements at play here. That would be some combination of retaining walls or levees, possibly filling the entire site. And as I mentioned, it would be advisable to provide improved access above the 100-year floodplain to be able, so that trucks and delivery equipment, et cetera, can get access to the site during that event should it occur. And I believe several months ago, there was a question that was posed by the council relative to sea level rise. And so just for your reference, the 100-year flood elevation of 12.5 is a more conservative measure with respect to elevation of facilities than mean higher high water plus anticipated sea level rise. There are various estimates as to how much the sea level will rise, of course, as everyone's aware. The most commonly cited study on that came from the University of Washington and speaks to approximately 22 inches of sea level rise in the next 50 years. So that would be approximately 11.3, which is, of course, lower than 12.5. So we feel reasonably confident in the 100-year flood elevation as an estimate for the basis of the vertical datum of the new facility. I want to go next to the summary of the environmental assessment work that's been done. In listening to tonight's proceedings, obviously, there's already been some level of discussion about the environmental conditions on the Friend property. I will say that the wetland specialist that visited the site on the 30th spent time on both pieces of property and identified ditches that he believes would be categorized as wetlands or water bodies of the state by ecology and the Corps. And so those conditions exist at both sites. And there are, of course, federal, state, and even local approvals required to fill within those areas and/or of those areas. So just briefly, the Windjammer Charette site, there's a ditch that runs along the southern boundary that basically divides the paved area from the park. And in the biologist's opinion, that ditch would be defined as a wetland. And a portion of that would, of course, have to be filled if we went through with the Windjammer vicinity layout based on the Charette concept. So our estimate of that mitigation is somewhere between $150,000 and $275,000 based on a three-to-one mitigation of the area and a reasonable unit cost for how much we would have to pay to replace those wetlands. We've selected the higher end of that range for the purposes of this comparative analysis. And I'll say that the risk of delays and/or cost increases associated with this particular issue at this site are relatively low, considering that there, in the biologist's opinion, there's limited tidal water connections of this ditch, and it's not a very high-functioning or high-category wetland that would drive a more extensive permitting process. Within the Friend site, again, there are ditches along the boundaries that would need to be filled. The site, of course, adjacent to and north of the Friend property is a mitigation wetland that was constructed some years ago. And so one option to provide access to the site, probably the cleanest and most direct option to provide access above the 100-year floodplain to the site, would be filling a portion of that wetland as well. And so based on the acreage that we think would be impacted, the mitigation costs for wetlands replacement here would range on the low side from about $400,000 up to as much as $800,000. And so we selected the lower end of that range for the comparative analysis here. Of course, we want to consider the risks of cost increases or delays. In the biologist's opinion, the risk of this site is relatively high, primarily due to the potential tidal water connection that's already been discussed at length tonight. And if that issue goes away, there's still the issue of the need to fill a portion and/or impact the buffer of an existing mitigation wetland, which is not viewed very favorably by ecology and the Corps. With that, I would like to, at this point, turn it over to Mr. Gordon from Geo Engineers. There was a substantial amount of data collected below the ground surface, and I think it would be well to have the expert speak on those issues.
Jay Gordon with Geo Engineers. So what we did is came out and we were asked to look at all five of these sites. And do you have a pointer here by chance? I'll just...
There is one around. I just don't know where I stationed it.
No problem. There's three of these sites or four of these sites that are... Maybe we can see. So there's a bunch of these that are on a line here. So we did look, spent a little bit of time looking at the old historical information. All, you know, cities that are like Oak Harbor that are on a marine environment are entertaining for us Geotecs because we never know what we're going to find. Man has always been interested in dumping their stuff near the water, and so we know that. The bluff appears to be on Pioneer Way, based on the old historical photos, and I'm sure some of you have been here forever and have relatives somewhere that can probably speak to this, but they have some fascinating pictures. So, and we also worked on Pioneer Way and drilled a hole up here where we found about five feet of fill. City Beach Road and Pioneer and found what we call glacial till. Just to give some background, till is a material that's placed in front of the glacier and is squatted on, and here it was squatted on by about 4,000 feet of ice. So if you want to build something on glacial till, you can build anything you want. So that's what we really were hoping for and looking for in the Oak Harbor area. What you would expect then is this way, that till is going to get deeper, of course, as you come this direction. Since there's all these sites in this orientation, we drilled some holes along this alignment. We drilled some holes along that alignment. And then the Friend site was added a bit later, and so we drilled two holes this way, thinking that that's mostly where that geology will change. And so these lines here are cross-sectional lines that we put together just to show you what we found. And I'm going to go to this one first. So this one is this cross-section right here that goes all the way across. So what we're calling in our report is the east site is over towards B' as you can see it, and then the west site is on the left or the west side. The Charette site is kind of in the middle, and I can't read them from here, but it'd be that boring and that boring. So starting from the left, there's 10 to 15 feet of fill on these sites that was either placed as upland fill or hydraulic fill that's dredged out of the bay, as you've heard previously tonight. Then there's a unit right here that's all beach deposits, and that's just historical beach that's been, this glaciation occurred about 12,000 years ago for this material, about 14,000 for that material. And so this is the till. This is the stuff that's concrete. This is loose beach deposits. This material will liquefy during an earthquake. This is the biggest thing for us for Geotecs is, from my standpoint, these are critical facilities in that I need, I'm expected to hold them up so that Brian's stuff still works. And so for me, that's my job, is to say, okay, what do I need to do to make this ground work or go over to this site? This site is a different unit right here that's a very strange unit. It's in only Bellingham and south or north Skagit County and some part of Woodbee. This is a soft clay, very, very soft. It will settle when you put stuff on it. So the other consideration here is if you place a whole bunch of weight up here, it actually will settle this material, and that will settle over a long, long period of time. So when you look at it from a Geotech standpoint, what I have to do is do some ground modification or drive piles through this. The stuff that Brian likes to build weighs a lot, and it settles a lot. So we calculated something like 10 to 15 inches of settlement during a design earthquake over here because of this thickness of profile, about four to six inches over here, and I think about six or eight inches, six to nine inches in here. So when you have that situation, then, if we have these critical facilities, then you're going to either pile support it and drive piles all the way down into this till, or there's a more preferred way of doing that that's called ground support, and we actually install stone columns. And stone columns are used a lot in marine environment where you're inserting 36-inch diameter stone columns into the ground, displaces the sand, densifies the sand, now it won't liquefy. Now you can build it the way that Brian would prefer to build it, which was the chalice red footing since it's a lot easier to design. So going back to the Friend site, okay, sorry, we'll go through this one. This is the north-south axis through the middle. So this is the Charette site over here. This is the park site. Really, the only difference is, you can see it, I'm not sure this is really how it was intended, but there's, the beach follows whatever this is, which this is a man-made feature, this is not. So, yeah. Well, so this is the old beach, and actually, this might be the slough, the Friend slough. Oh, you know what? I'll bet you it is. That would be probably the Friend slough. Looking at the old data, it didn't occur to me. So anyway, not a lot of difference here, other than what's happening is whatever your ground improvement is, it has to go deeper as you're going south. So you'd prefer, again, just from a geotechnical standpoint, I would like to stay north. The Friend site is this one, and so same kind of overall thickness of the fill, much thicker beach deposit as it goes down gradient, and then this also has that soft clay, well, it's soft to medium stiff. So this has a soft to medium stiff clay. So the difference in the sites really is that this is much deeper to do your ground improvement. Your ground improvement's going to go to right here, and this will still settle. So that's the main difference on these two sites. If you were to do ground improvement, this is what you're going to improve. You don't have to improve this, but it will settle. So again, you kind of need to look at those issues. It's much cleaner, quite frankly, just from a Geotech standpoint. This is your preferred site just because, you know, I got less material to improve. It's at a higher elevation because this is where I'm improving too. So that's really most of the geotechnical issues that are there. So I've kind of gone through most of those from the de-watering, shoring, and flood protection. The groundwater's about the same elevation of all of these, so that's not really a major consideration. The shoring would also be fairly similar, other than the upper sites have a groundwater barrier, the till is higher. There is an issue with flood protection on some of these sites, particularly the Friend site. When the ground shakes, it liquefies, and it will not hold stuff up above it. So if you're going to do dikes on the Friend site, I have to improve the area underneath the dikes. Or if you're going to raise that whole site, we probably have to improve the whole site. So just kind of keep that in mind. It's an additional cost. So the main things are, you would have to additionally do the flood control deeper to till. Those are the most of the Geotech considerations. Yes, sir?
Would you go back to that? Excuse me, go back to the previous chart? Okay.
Which one?
That one. While you were talking, you said, and it looks to me like 0.4, you said this is the preferred site. It's that narrow one on the left.
From a geotechnical standpoint, this one would be the easiest to work with.
Okay. Go back to the photo now and tell me where that is. I can picture it if I can see the, yeah.
That would be that site right there.
Wow. Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
And so the one with, the bizarre part to me is that is, doesn't make any sense, but I never argue with a great contractor. I didn't put the dirt here. This site way over here has that soft clay. This site right here has the soft clay. It isn't anywhere in between. Sometimes they do that to us.
So taking a look at the site on the right-hand side, where our existing, where existing wastewater treatment facilities at?
This guy.
Do you see settling happening with our existing plant?
I have not looked at that plant in great detail. The main settling that would occur that would be of concern is during a large earthquake. So that's where your, it's a liquefaction-induced settlement. This is pretty deep. What happens when this stuff settles? It'll settle, for example, a couple inches, but it'd be a big, big bowl. So quite frankly, you don't really care, other than, again, I would have to maintain, if you want a 13.5 elevation, I'd have to do a calculation and say, well, you need to raise that berm. Actually, don't bring in to 13.5, go to 13.9, because in 20 years from now, that site actually is going to be 13.5. So that's really the only difference on that, is I have to consider that in your earthwork calcs or something. But it's not a real big consideration, it's just something we have to keep in our back pocket.
Again, the cross-piece there where you did, yeah. That's the Charette site, right?
Yes.
Okay. Where is that in? You said that the one on the left was the best site. Where's that as far as best or bad or something?
It's incrementally not that much different from the better site. It's, because here's what's happening, if, I think this is the better view. It's, the till is just like five feet deeper. And there's no, none of the clay, and see, there's a big difference here, and this beach is like 10 feet thicker. So the shred is actually fine. You might have to do something again on the south side, because if you do flood control and have to raise a little bit of your site, you're going to have to do a little bit of improvement, I think, along that south margin.
And we're, and we are not reinventing the wheel or developing new technology to do what you just said?
No. This is a fairly common, and it's actually cheaper, you know, we're working with Correlo, as a matter of fact, on the Bellingham wastewater treatment plant upgrade, and that's got piles 70 feet deep. The stone columns are actually a cheaper, more preferred solution in this environment, to be honest. So your site's actually better than the Bellingham site, if that makes you feel any better.
When you tell me, when you tell me we can do it for $5 million, I'll feel better.
There you go.
I just feel good now.
You've got to take what you can when your soul's got to make you feel good, you know what I mean?
Yeah. One of those lots that you picked is the best one, is a car sales, one of those spots that you picked is the best one is a car sales place? You should probably go get a job.
I could use a nighttime employment, I think.
Counselor Rumber.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you go back to the cross-section on your north-south axis?
Can you do public comment?
Yeah. Is this a conversation or?
We're willing, after the presentation...
That A-3, that's your north-south axis going through the Charette site.
This one is?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. And as it goes, like you said, south, it falls down much deeper right there.
It does, right here. So if you were going to use this site again to get to the 13.5, you're going to place more fill here. You would have to improve that, and again, you're getting on the south end of that site, you're getting deeper again into some of that improvement.
That surface elevation is the slope behind the bank, you know, where you ramp up there.
Yep. Now, if, you know, I know from your standpoint, I'm sure there's reasons not to take this facility all the way up here. This is going to be your best shot for your least expense because this is where your, the bluff is right here. So if you were able to get all the way up here somewhere, you'd, you know, really reduce your ground improvement. Now, the aeration basin for this, one of the biggest, heaviest pieces of equipment, is going to be 20 feet below grade. So the ground improvement, if you go to this slide, the ground improvement, you're going to already be down. So you only got 10 feet of ground improvement to do, you know, on one of the bigger, more, you know, sensitive pieces of structure. So some of this, and you don't need to do the administration, I mean, well, not the administration is not important, but some of these structures are lighter and can maybe tolerate a little bit different or not as much ground improvement. Maybe we can do a little... Maybe we can do a little bit, something different, only crew, you know, do ten feet or twenty feet. There's value engineering you can do in this whole process.
And probably by the time we get down to bottom of footing, we may be down at twenty-five, possibly thirty, depending on what elevation you wanna be for your hundred-year flood event. So, it almost like the piling or the rock column thing starts going away.
Let's have you on the mic. Starts going away.
Thanks.
The deeper we get with the structure.
Yeah, it gets more shallow.
Yeah, yeah, it gets more shallow.
Yeah.
And then you would, okay, the, then when I read your report in here, archaeology did not find any midden at those borings.
That is true. They did not find anything. Yes?
Councilman Rumber.
Actually, it's, I guess, a point of order. We're close to our time, so wouldn't we need to extend?
Feel free.
I move to suspend the council's rules and extend our meeting time to ten-thirty.
Second.
We got a motion of second to extend our city council meeting. Any discussion on that?
Okay.
All those in favor of extending our city council meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Order extended.
Oh, thanks. Mr. Mattson, I have one question for you. The farther away we get from, the farther west we go, the longer the distance is for our transport line to go east, obviously.
Correct.
And in this report, it also addresses issues about having an undercarriage or underpinning for the transport lines, the main sewer mains going through there and manholes. Would you anticipate that this would be mostly high-density polyethylene pipe that would go through there to compensate for the liquefaction and settlement?
Very well could. Typically, we don't pile support conveyance lines outside of the yard or the fence line. Where we get worried about settlement is where pipes connect to structures, and so we have to have some uniform amount of settlement or no settlement, otherwise, we get shearing and breakage, et cetera. So, as you're conveying from one side of the site to the other, certain amount of settlement is allowable, but we would be more concerned with what happens inside the fence lines there.
Is there a mechanical joint that allows for that differential movement?
There are some, but they're very expensive and subject to corrosion, not ideal for this environment, so.
Thanks.
Okay. So, what we've now attempted to do, based on this information, is to develop a comparative cost analysis at a similar level of detail as to those that have been presented in the past, to give you a sense of what this might all mean with respect to costs in the different locations. And so, in order to start this comparison, I want to begin with the last number that you've probably seen and may remember, which was developed around the Sharette concept that was presented on the fourteenth. And a site plan of that concept, just as a reminder, is shown here. A section view is shown here. One of the things that's unique about this particular arrangement is that the aeration basins are buried beneath the future alignment of Bayshore Drive. And as we go through this, you'll see that that indeed presents a cost premium that could be eliminated if you were to find a different location. So, I want to start and peel away some of those costs that we won't be discussing. Everyone's familiar, I believe, with this ninety-three-and-a-half million dollar total cost. There are three main elements of that cost that we presented in the past, the outfall, the conveyance of wastewater to the site, not necessarily from the existing treatment plant to the property, but how to get all of that wastewater to the existing treatment plant. That's that seven-point-six million dollars for this particular alternative. And then eighty-three million dollars is what we've called the total cost, project cost, of the treatment plant itself. So, looking at that eighty-three million dollars for the treatment plant, there's a chunk of that that's allocated as an allowance, I'll say, based on a multiplier of about twenty-five percent for the soft costs, engineering, legal, administrative costs for the entire project. So, the rest of that is about sixty-eight million dollars, and that's basically construction plus land. And then if you take that construction plus land, what we commonly find when we develop a cost estimate for this, is there's a certain amount of that cost that's essentially fixed. And I use fixed somewhat loosely, because there's always ways to vary those costs. But those are the costs for the equipment that you're going to buy, for the electrical cable and the copper that you're gonna buy, for the concrete that you're gonna pour, for the steel that you're gonna buy, for the gates and the landscaping and all that stuff, that is an essential cost element, and really isn't that dependent upon where you might cite the facility. So, I think it's well to try to set those aside for the most part, and focus in on what we would call this sort of variable costs that are more site-specific. And that's about seventeen percent of the total cost, so it's a large number, you know, almost twelve million dollars, nothing to sneeze at, but it is a smaller component of the overall cost there. And so, then I've tried to give you an idea of how those variable costs are distributed for the Sharette site on the Windjammer vicinity. And again, that's eleven-point-seven million dollars, so what, we've categorized these as shown on the legend to the right. About two million dollars is allocated towards land acquisition, and that's based on assessed value only. Architectural premium, we've acknowledged that we're gonna have to do something special and different in this site. That's one-point-six million dollars. We've got added structural cost, which is eight-hundred thousand dollars. That's effectively to beef up the lid of those aeration basins to make them rated for traffic. If we didn't have to cover them at all, we could eliminate that lid in its entirety and save a lot of money. If they did have to be covered, we could, but you didn't have to drive over them with trucks, then we could make that lid not as thick, and it would save money. That's our estimate, about eight-hundred thousand dollars of savings there. The geotechnical premium, Mr. Gordon has laid out ground improvements that will be required at all sites, and we acknowledge those ground improvements in our estimates to date for the Windjammer vicinity, that's about one-point-seven million. The piping that Mr. Alberg was referring to, in order to get the wastewater to and the treated effluent back from the site to the discharge, is about four-hundred thousand dollars for the Sharette alternative. And then, the majority of this cost, not quite half of it, is sitework. And so, I want to spend a little bit more time looking at sitework and the elements that comprise that number, which is about five-point-two million dollars for the Windjammer Sharette layout. Again, there's base site, the pipes, the paving, the grading that's gonna happen largely, regardless of where you're at. And then there are some site allowances that, at this level of detail, that we apply, and that's about twenty percent of the total cost, or one-point-two million dollars. And those are the cost factors that we really tried to compare the two sites based on allowances for wetland mitigation, flood protection, stormwater management, clearing and demolition costs. If there's something on the site that exists today that can't be there when you start construction, you gotta get rid of it, that costs some money. And then again, the base cost estimate. So, those are the elements of sitework and the overall variable cost elements for the Sharette, Windjammer vicinity Sharette layout. Now, on the property that's adjacent to the Windjammer vicinity or the Friends property, we've developed a layout that's at a similar level of detail that we've shown to date for the other sites. And this is a plan view of that, as you can see on the right in the building key, all of the facilities are represented there. This is a longer, narrower site. It's totally, in total, it's about six acres. I think we could build this facility here and not take up the full six, as is shown here, but a portion of that six would be required, as we'll see in the section view, for some sloping to get up and above the flood elevation. Another thing to point out here is those aeration basins, in order to fit here, it's likely that they won't be open, that they're probably going to be slabbed over the top with structures built on top in order to fit. So, it's less expensive than building a road over them, but it's, you still have a structural premium to, in order to fit on the site. And then we've positioned the buildings around the edges for architectural treatments and such. So, I think this is a section view that shows a concept of how we could integrate into this site. It's actually, I think, presents some unique opportunities from a sighting standpoint. The sloping, the concept for this really came from another facility that our architect has worked on near the shoreline in another state, and the concept is sort of sloping dunes that rise up from the shoreline and then back down to the lowlands. And I think if you were to integrate your pitched roofs at a similar slope and make them perhaps green roofs, that this facility would largely sort of go away and look quite natural in its environment, and could be fairly attractive, quite frankly. However, there are challenges associated with it from a geotechnical and a flood control standpoint that do tend to increase the cost of those elements. And so, I'll present those next. I want to do that by sort of comparing the offsetting costs for this alternate, which is the Friends property, relative to the Windjammer. As we'll see, some of the changes or differences about this site would result in lower costs. And those, of the variable costs that I mentioned, those are listed here. Property acquisition based on assessed value is quite a bit lower. Demolition and clearing is going to be less, because it's an undeveloped site. And the aeration basin structure can be a little less expensive then on the Windjammer Sharette because of the, what I mentioned earlier with respect to the slab thickness. There are some higher costs. It's farther away from the existing point of wastewater diversion, so we'll have to spend more money to get the wastewater there, we'll have to spend more money to get the treated effluent back to the bay. The geotechnical conditions, as Mr. Gordon laid out, are more substantial here, so that's going to elevate the cost of that line item. And then the sitework, primarily flood protection and wetland mitigation. So, that sitework, those comparison is shown here, whereas we started at about five-point-two for the Windjammer Sharette with this Friends site, we are going to spend more money on those allowances related to flood protection and wetlands mitigation, about a million dollars of difference, based on the anticipated impact to the wetlands that exist around the perimeter, and based to bring in a lot of fill material, about forty-five thousand yards of fill material and place that on the site in order to elevate it above the hundred-year flood elevation. So, as a, again, to keep this in context, I want to point out that there's variables within the Windjammer vicinity itself that will also influence cost, and what we learned through Amendment Five may help us make ultimately the right decision. Hopefully, it will help us make the right decision in any case, but within the Windjammer vicinity itself. This was a conceptual plan and perspective view that we presented on the fourteenth. This was an alternative to the Sharette option that we developed earlier, based on a couple of perceived benefits, one of which being you eliminate the need to build a road over the top of the basin, and also, it presents a little bit cleaner access from an O&amp;M standpoint, and still retains a retail corridor that sort of runs north-south, connecting Pioneer Way to the park. This was just an early concept, and the intent at that point in time was to really show you that we're not locked into any particular arrangement in making the decision to move forward with the Windjammer vicinity, that there's lots of flexibility, and we'll move forward with that throughout the process. But I use this as an example for the comparative analysis in the same way as we did with the Friends site. We think that from a cost comparison, the Windjammer alternate layout relative to the Sharette, that there are a lot of things that will be the same. Property acquisition, of course, we're on the same amount of property there. Demolishing clearing is going to happen at either location, and the distance to and from for the wastewater conveyance is the same. However, based on the information that Mr. Gordon has presented and the information in the survey, we know that the ground is higher to the north, we know that the depth to till is more shallow to the north, so there are certain costs that could be avoided or reduced if we were to go with this alternate layout. The aeration basin structure itself, if it was built further to the north, as shown on the alternate layout, we would save some money there. Again, the geotechnical and the sitework costs would be reduced based on the conditions that exist further north. So, as a way of comparing that with the Windjammer Sharette on the left and the Windjammer alternate on the right, we see that those allowances actually decrease in that case as we're able to reduce the cost of flood protection measures and wetlands mitigation. So, bringing it all back together, again, this is a comparison of the variable cost components for all sites. There's obviously substantial variable costs for all of them, ranging on the high side at the Windjammer to about eleven-point-seven million dollars, the majority of that being sitework, but also a fairly high portion of that in the geotechnical premium and land acquisition. On the Windjammer alternate, that's about one-and-a-half million dollars less. The sitework's slightly less, the geotech is slightly less, and the structural premium goes away. And then about in the middle is the Friends property. We see the sitework is higher, the geotechnical premium is higher, and the conveyance piping is higher, but the land acquisition costs are actually lower based on assessed value there. So, you've got a range of costs that are all fairly similar. Here's some additional detail, in case there's any questions about specifics in line items. I've got information that substantiates each of these numbers. But in general, those things at the Friends site that would be less expensive are shown with the green arrows down. Those things that would be more expensive are shown with the red arrows up, and obviously, the geotechnical premium and the flood protection allowance for that site is really what's making the difference. Conversely, on the Windjammer alternate site, we just see green arrows down, and that, as a result, makes it less expensive by, to the tune of about a million and a half dollars. Bringing it all back together again, to that ninety-three-point-five million dollar number that we started with, those variable site-specific costs are shown in that light blue band, somewhere between eleven-point-seven and ten-point-one million dollars. It's, that's a big difference in terms of sheer magnitude of the dollars, not a very big difference in terms of the percentage of the total cost of the project that the city would consider. And I always like to say this, as an engineering estimator at this level of detail, I would say that is within our ability to accurately measure, considering the level of design documentation that's been completed to date. So, in summary, and some conclusions for your consideration here, based on the assessed value, it appears that the Friends site will likely be less costly to acquire. However, based on the technical data that we've collected, it appears that the Friends site will have a higher construction cost, primarily due to these factors. There's very little difference in overall cost between the sites, as I have shown, and whatever the council wishes to proceed with, I believe we have an obligation to find the means to reduce the cost of those variable components to the extent that we can, and considering that in the final layout of the alternatives. And again, as far as the non-cost risk factors, based largely on risk associated with environmental mitigation, it appears as the Friends site does present a higher risk for moving forward with the schedule on that. So, next steps, if the council has enough information to direct us down a path forward from tonight, there are basically two options for that. Resolution twelve-thirty-three would essentially tell us that we have enough information to stay the course with the Windjammer vicinity, as was voted on in August, and the steps forward are shown there on the left. We would then move forward completing the draft technical chapters, develop a phasing and financing plan. We have another public open house and council workshop in our project scope to inform the public and council with respect to the contents of that planning document. We would then be back to you the first quarter of 2013, looking for a resolution and authorization to submit that to ecology. Environmental documentation would be completed shortly thereafter, and the city, in order to maintain your schedule, would then look to move into the preliminary design phases. And my opinion is, the focus of the early preliminary design really needs to be on finalizing the location and the precise layout of the treatment plant based on community input, as was directed by council in August, and also procuring the equipment that you would use, primarily membrane equipment, because that has a fairly substantial influence on the layout itself. So, those would be early action items for the preliminary design phase. Should you choose to expand the Windjammer vicinity to include the Friends property, although it is adjacent to, immediately adjacent to, the Windjammer vicinity, I believe what we've found is that the technical requirements of the site are different enough from the Windjammer vicinity proper, and certainly, the community impacts, given the location and the fact that we haven't discussed this in public as a potentially viable site, are going to be different enough than the commercial and open spaces that were previously considered, that it would be in your best interest to not move forward with the facilities planned without going through some additional level of public vetting on that site. And so, the steps that I've laid out for following Resolution twelve-thirty-four are shown here. We would need to collect additional community input and compare these sites using the same metrics that we have to date. That's the triple bottom line plus methodology that you've used since the onset of the project. Once you've gone through that process, collect that final location and layout of the treatment plant with public input, likely in the first quarter... plant with public input likely in the first quarter of next year, that would allow you to move forward with the facilities plan, actually with a little bit more detail than you have now, because hopefully you could leverage the value of that investment in additional community input to finalize the three to four acres of site and write up the facilities plan around that option. There would be then, steps four through eight would be very similar to Resolution 1233, with the main difference here, as I said, that I think the location of that facility should be obtained early in the Resolution 1234 process, which gives you a little bit of an advantage. But it is a delay in order to provide that additional level and opportunity for input of about six months between the two options. And I believe that is all that I have in terms of presentation.
At this time, we'll go ahead and turn to the public and see if there's any public comment. If so, we're going to have you at the podium and ask you to state your name, and you have three minutes to comment in reference to this agenda item.
Shane Hoffmeyer, Oak Harbor, Washington. First of all, I guess I never, never thought I would have to pay somewhere around $90 a month to flush the toilet. I know maybe it doesn't sound like a lot, but we have a couple of investment bankers here in the room, and I think they're well aware of if you were able to save $90 a month for 30, 40 years, it's a heck of a lot of money. So after everything I've heard tonight, I still kind of feel like I felt all along that the options on the table just don't sound that good. It just seems like there would have been better options out there. You know, if I was out there buying a house and I told the real estate agent, I want it to be under this dollar amount, I don't want in this neighborhood, I don't want a two-story house, and they come out and it's in the neighborhood I said I didn't want it in, it's a two-story house, and it costs twice what I said I could afford, I'm going to go get a new real estate agent. And I hope nobody in this room takes offense to that, but as I've sit and watched this process for the last year, year and a half, that's how it's felt. And I don't know, I just, I really don't think any of the options on the table are the best. But boy, I think that if you guys want 20,000 people mad at you, put it in the park. So I guess the request from me is keep it out of the park, and best of luck to all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoffmeyer.
Jeff Tremblor, Oak Harbor. Could, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, could we go back to the total cost slide, please?
The cross-sections, the red lines?
Total, the total cost.
Oh, total cost.
The graph. Thank you. Actually, I'd like to comment and commend Corello for coming in with their subcontractors here, with coming in with firm data for you all to consider. It's the first time you've been presented with actual firm engineering data on which to base a decision. And I think it's critical because it points out some of the facts concerning the floodplain and concerning the soil types and the hazards associated with liquefaction during an earthquake event for something that's going to be a facility that you want here in Oak Harbor for 75 years to function. So with that said, the thing that I see that's missing on this comparison is we're talking a site, all three of these sites have potential future tax revenue value. Has the city done any work whatsoever to determine what the revenue decrease stream is from removing this commercial property from the tax rolls? And I bring that up because you may not be getting a total comparison here on costs over the long facility. The other thing I'd like to mention is you can reduce these costs here by going back, and I don't know why the old city shops property fell out of discussion. It would be, for me, as a member of the public, and also a concern for the $90 a month to flush the toilet, why not use owned property of the city, which is close by, which again, now with the data, we now know based on the geology report, that you're now up on the bluff. You've now probably reduced some of your site work costs as well. Unknown specifically until borings are done, but these are things that ought to be thought about and looked at. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tremblor. Anyone else?
Mel Vance. First off, get it out of the park. I'm going to evaluate just these three. I agree, I think there were better sites that were discarded earlier. I'm not going to get into that. I'm going to address just these three. You look at the percentage difference in costs, there's really not much difference between the three sites. When it comes to the newly added front property, that has not gone through the same review process as all these other properties. There are some features with this property. They're very similar to some other locations that were thrown out extremely quickly very early on. They're not exactly identical, but they're very, very similar. As far as these three go, just evaluating these three. The wind jammer alternative is the better option. It gets it out of the park. A little bit lower cost percentage-wise, it's negligible, but you're into better soils. Again, just get it out of the park.
Thank you, Mr. Vance. Anyone else?
Hi, Mark Johnson. We're Pioneer Automotive. You guys have a different name for it. I have a question rather than address you folks today in a meeting that we were talking about having and haven't had yet. But my question is this. There's an option, an option, an option, and I haven't had a lot of feedback or input from the people that I've spoke with. What is the alternate or alternative or whatever you call it? That's what I'd like to know. Is that the back half of Pioneer, the back half of Chrysler, or what does that involve? Because I wasn't here at the last meeting. Does any, can anybody answer that?
We'll get that clarified for you.
Okay.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Mayor, thanks. Council, thanks. Citizens of Oak Harbor, thank you. I'm Joel Mammy, Pioneer Automotive Services as well. Mark Johnson, you just met, business partner. Along with the discussions that we hadn't had, that's one of the things that was kind of fun for us as we found this whole agenda out through customers and then the newspaper coming into our facility and informing us that they want to tell a story in the paper. And our employees are staring at us, looking at us going, what? Where's this place going? Like, we're all finding out now together. You know, I'm a local member of this community, have been my entire life raising kids here, intend to stay here. I understand that this is a crucial thing that's going to have to happen for our town. But going back to some of these other statements with businesses that are working, functioning, in economic times where we watch everything disappear, we've been there for two years and two weeks now. And we're in the black. Things are going good. We've got a lot of people and customers that have followed us for several years that come to us for maintenance-ing. And I think it'd be a shame to go ahead and do that to the community and quite honestly, to all the families that we support by having people employed by us. Some of the other items would be settling. Settling's going to happen anywhere you go. Go build a house somewhere, you're going to have some settling. So we understand that there's incurred costs with those type of items. One of the things I seen a few weeks ago in the paper, which I've not heard anything else about, was that we were going to look at some of our options as far as the expenses that we're looking at here. And I mean, it's neat to look at 93.5, but for some reason, the only thing that we're focusing on here is the difference between 10, 1, and 11.7. The big nut on the bottom there, we didn't even think about, is there a different option for a building of a facility? I know I saw it in the paper here not too long ago that we were going to discuss looking at different engineers, architects to build the structure, and if that's an avenue. I don't know. Maybe I missed the paper because I've been busy taking care of the community's vehicles, but I can't just sit here and look at this and focus at, okay, a difference of 1.2 million, a difference of this one, 60 or 55 million is the biggest chunk. We didn't quiver on that. We didn't even discuss that, or is there any way to cut it? And I guarantee you, get into a project like this, and we've all seen it before, incidentals and everything, it's not going to go in our benefit, for sure. It'll end up accrued. The borings that were done, they're about a 10-inch round hole. They go deep, but that's it. So go ahead and pull the ground, back it up. We can all be assured that there's going to be things that come up and that we find that are going to end up adding however many more million to the project to be done. So, I mean, we really ought to look at a different way to figure this out. Sure. You know, the other site, we talked about the friend site. I know a lot of people that have houses that might be in the fending. I've talked to them, and nobody really seems to have an issue with it. Now, I'm not saying this to save my bacon and so forth, and my family, and occupations for our employees and so forth, but, you know, I mean, come down Highway 20, take a left onto Pioneer, check out our septic, and take your kids on the grass behind it and hang out and have a sandwich. I probably won't do it. I mean, I have a hard time going down there now when I get to smell this thing during the summer months when it's sweltering. And I understand the new sites are nice. I'm all right with that, but I just don't think it's the place to put it.
Well, we appreciate the comment.
Am I cut off? That's three?
Well, that's plus three.
All right.
No problem.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Thank you. What we're going to do is go ahead and see if there's any other public comment. Anyone else that wishes to weigh in at this time? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment, bring back our interim city engineer, Joe Stoll. Turn to the city council for their questions and comments, starting with Councilmember Heisen.
Thank you, Mayor. Sorry, I'm still writing my notes. First of all, to address Mr. Johnson and Mr. Mammy's comments regarding the site on the wind jammer and a budding pioneer, that was a hypothetical. No one, we didn't say, yes, that parcel on Pioneer is the one that we want when we selected the wind jammer vicinity. I think that the article might have been a little misleading because it was the vicinity, and that was just, this is what we could do if we acquired a parcel along Pioneer. So that was not meant to panic anyone. And I certainly understand if that had been me and I opened the paper and saw that picture, like, wait, that's where I work. So absolutely understandable, and that was not the intent or the decision at all, just so you know. And regarding the floodplain information that we got, for the wind jammer vicinity, I kept seeing a three-foot elevation number up there. Does that mean, a lot of what we wanted to do was going to be, I don't want to say subterranean, but below grade. We were hoping we could put a lot of this in the basement, so is that not going to happen? Oh, he is. He's nodding his head. Can you, can you explain to me how we can put that three feet up and yet still underground?
What we have to have three feet above ground is accesses to the buildings, so you can flood-proof what's underground, just like you would a basement for a house.
Okay.
That type of an idea.
Okay. I was seeing all that three feet up, and I was like, oh, man, I wanted to put that underground. Okay, perfect. So aesthetically, we can still mitigate a lot of the noise and the smell and the, like, we promised everybody that we would.
Yes.
Okay, that's really important, because we've been telling people, it won't smell it, it won't be ugly, and you won't hear it, and, okay, good. That is important, that we keep our promises. And let's see. It sounds to me like, logistically, while it does have its pros, that the friend property is pretty much out. And regarding the old city shops site, I agree, I liked the old city shops site way, way back. I mean, it is a moot point. But I think that what happened was way back last year, it was during the election sometime last year when this process first started, somebody contacted the fleet and the Boy Scouts and told them that the city was going to use eminent domain to claim that property and kick the Boy Scouts and the fleet off that land, which was not true. But it sent the Boy Scouts and the fleet into such a panic and caused such an uproar that that site never got a fair shake when it came to the public perception process. So I think that while a valid site, and it certainly had lots of pros there as well, it just, it just never, it never got a fair shake in the public eye because it had that negative impression, that negative stigma, just right off the bat before we even had a chance to start laying these out side by side because of that impression. And that is unfortunate. But the decision's been made, and all we can do now is make it the best possible, just prettiest, least intrusive treatment plant you ever saw, right, Brian? He's smiling at me. That's all I have. I might have a couple other questions as we get into the technical side, but thank you. Thank you, everybody, for your comments, and thanks for the presentation details. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Rumber.
Thank you, Mayor. For the benefit of some of the public speakers here, to bring them up to date on a couple of things, we did do a public, several public hearings on this and took input and site selection preferences and objections from many people. And I think we went through 11 sites and kept reducing it down, and we took a look at different technologies. And in the end, it came out to a three-to-three tie on either putting the site out at Crescent Harbor Road or one down here in the vicinity of Wind Jammer Park. And in a three-to-three tie, the mayor broke the tie and voted for going down there. So we're all in this together, and we're all in this together with the community to make this a successful project. It's necessary that we do it. We have expiration on our permits for the existing facility. And just because I voted for the one at Crescent Harbor does not mean that I am not going to support this one down here. I'm not going to make a motion to turn that or sabotage it. It's not fair to the council when, basically, the city made this decision. There are some things, I think, that we can consider on this site, including the depth. You know, I'm looking at the geotech on the profile on the east-west axis on this thing. And, you know, we have property in and around the existing wastewater treatment plant that could be considered, most likely, bottom-of-footing elevation for this facility, at least for the deep part of this, which would be also the heavy structure, is going to be in that gray soft clay type of material. It's possible that the, either the piling, which is probably not the preferred, but the rock pier, according to the geotech report, is better, which would be about 15 feet deep. And so there are some options that we could look at, potentially using city property, and then mitigate the loss of that square footage in the park by possibly purchasing cheaper property from the friends to expand our park, so that it becomes a passive use in that area, expanding the park, where we take advantage of the close proximity of our transport lines that go out to the lagoons, because we're going to be phasing this thing in. We're going to have to use those lagoons for a while. So I am going to vote for the resolution that allows us to move forward and not continue to evaluate any more sites from this report. And I agree with this, that the friend site has perhaps a lot more risk. All of the sites have risk. We could very likely run into archaeology findings down here. We could also, if we went out to the Crescent Harbor site, we would have approximately two miles of transport line to put out, even though it's a shallow trench compared to the excavation here. We could still run into inadvertent findings in that area. So no matter what we do, you're going to have risk. But we're also going to have risk if we do nothing. So I'm going to move forward, at least on my vote, to So I'm going to move forward, at least on my vote, to go with the recommendation that we support the selection of being in the vicinity to allow the city to go forward with DOE with the rest of this application. Thank you.
Mayor Proton, Pagel.
Thank you, Aron. There will be challenges and problems associated with this project, and the challenges may and you have offered solution for those problems. Problems like building that can withstand earthquake, problems on the cost of the project, and you offered some solutions to mitigate those problems. And in one item on the cost, all the three options are under floodplain, but one is specific that I've seen is the Friend area, and it says within the flood inundation zone. Now, all the other two, the other two are also under that condition.
I can go back to a graphic here and kind of show you where that zone is. It's back towards the beginning, I think. There we go. If you can see the property that has the approximate seven feet, that's the Friend property, and the blue area is the floodplain. What we're showing there is that we presume we'd have to raise that property about six feet to get it out of flood zone. Along the north end of the park, the line meanders to about a third, to a half, and into those properties, and it's, on the park side would be about three feet deep, and it would taper off to no depth where the line is.
So even if the portion of the other one, Windjammer Charette, excuse me, is within the 100-year floodplain, I think this will make a difference, because I have heard a concern about paying up to ninety dollars per month for sewer service. Now, the costs of this project will be made based on the utility rates. Now, if the city can request for grant from the federal government, that will significantly reduce the utility cost for customers. Now, being these options under the 100-year floodplain, do you think the city will be able to request for a grant from the federal government, and the federal government can give the city a grant, a portion for this project?
You know, I believe we will be able to. You know, it's something that we can mitigate.
I'll add to that.
Yeah?
Please do. So in determining the final site, you'll submit the environmental documentation to support that conclusion, and if that environmental documentation is reviewed and approved by ecology and EPA and the federal services, then you will be eligible for the grant funding. It's important to note that one of the sort of criteria that they evaluate is if you are going to be doing something like filling in a wetland or causing the impact, you're obligated to demonstrate that that was the best and most viable alternative of those alternatives considered. And we have a range of alternatives that we've developed in this process, and we'll make a justification for the ultimate recommendation. But final approval, that will depend on the agencies and the services concurrents with that recommendation.
That'll be great, because my concern is these sites are under the floodplain, and there could be a restriction from the federal government to grant funds for this project.
Right. And again, I think that the avenue that would bring that out would be the environmental documentation and approval process.
That'd be great. I think one of the benefits also for choosing one of the choices or the options is the losing a portion of the park. Now, if the option to build the wastewater treatment plant in the Friend area, there were concerns about losing the park area, so in this way, there'll be no problem of losing the park area. I think that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Councilmember Campbell.
Thank you. I've been sitting here going back over the history, and as I remember it, and I'll give you that I'm old and my memory's going away once in a while, it's okay to laugh, guys. As I remember, I think there were about thirteen sites that we started with, and they got eliminated for a lot of reasons. One got eliminated because we could not pump that stuff to the west of the island, and the county wouldn't let us annex the property. We worked it down to two pieces of property, and the last thing that happened was the Charette on those two pieces of property. And again, as I remember it, the one out on Crescent Harbor Road got eliminated because, primarily, there's a $200,000, there was $200,000 a year just to pump that stuff out there and then pump it back down. That was something that we were going to have for the rest of our lives. That night, that we made this decision on what's being called the area now, but as I remember this, and we saw pictures of it laid out on that piece of property down there, on the Pioneer Motors property, the night we made the selection. One of the things that we had from day one, oh, one more thing, taking it out to the city property, the old public workplace, again, you got to pump it uphill and then pump it back downhill. That was an engineering thing that people... I...
Continue.
Give my spot to Mr. Ombert.
You don't have to give your spot to me. I don't have anything to say.
Obviously, you were talking. I could hear you.
No. You have the floor. Councilmember Campbell.
The night that we chose this, and the process that we were using was, and started out with, we got all these sites, and we're going to narrow it down to one. And the night that we voted on this, it'd be one spot that everybody liked. It was good, and it sounded good, and it was the best that we could do, except it was still in Windjammer Park, and there's still a lot of people that don't like that. Now, tonight, well, recently, we heard about the Friend property. That's one more place, and it's about a million dollars less to go out there that takes it out of the park. It also eliminates any concern on the Pioneer Motors people. There's nothing down there. And rather than displace people, I think that would probably be wise for us to look at that spot also. I believe that the ordinance that we're looking at, 1234, would be the right one, where we look at Friend, still keeping the number-one spot, but looking at Friend to see if we could do technically, maybe not money-wise, but technically and all those other reasons why it would be good to put it there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Muntz.
Thank you, Mayor. Our engineer right now, Mr. Trump, kind of off the wall, but in the news today was flooding of the Everett Sewage Plant. Do you know what kind of plant they have and why, because of a storm, they have gallons and gallons of sewage going into the water?
You know, I'm not aware of that one. Are you aware of that one a little bit? Would you care to respond to it?
The city of Everett has a combined collection system, which means that the same pipes that carry their wastewater carry the stormwater, and normally, they're large enough to carry both, but when it rains, like it did yesterday, there's overflow, relief points that are designed in to protect the downstream facilities, and those relief points were what overflowed yesterday. That's called a combined sewer overflow, and they have a requirement to reduce the extent of those and the number of those over time.
Okay, thank you. To my knowledge, and in all the discussion, I don't believe our current plant downtown has ever had a problem with high winds and high tide, that there's ever been any flooding of how it was constructed.
And not that I'm aware of.
Okay. I, too, with Mr. Councilman Pagel, was worried about the floodplain and being able to qualify for federal loans. I know that we have figured out to have to pay for this with our own nickel, because you don't know if you're going to get grants or not, and if we get those, then the price of utilities would go down. So hopefully, we will have good grant writers, and they will look favorable onto us. And we're still doing this in stages. The final cost will be like the 95 million, but we can still do this somewhat in stages. Some part has to be right then, but the capacity to expand, we can add on, but that would be part of the 95 million, if I'm not mistaken. Mr....
The 93 and a half million that we've allocated to Windjammer Charette option is all of the structure and equipment necessary for the end of the planning period. So you are correct that we would be able to reduce the upfront cost of that by buying less equipment, fewer pumps, potentially. We talked about some strategies in terms of smaller piping, et cetera, in the initial years of construction and operation to reduce the upfront cost.
But our goal would still be met, that this isn't just a 25- or 30-year, this is 50, 75-year-plus looking at it.
Absolutely. So we want to select a site that supports the long-term vision, and then try to only that equipment that's necessary for your near-term needs, so that we don't burden the ratepayers of today with, you know, what might happen in 30 or 40 years.
All right, thank you. That's into my questions right now. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Savitis.
Thank you, Mayor. I am in support of the first resolution, 1233, and I want to say why. The least expensive option, as we've been presented here tonight, if I'm looking at this correctly, by 1.5 million is the Windjammer alternate site, correct? So that is the least expensive site. It also makes sense for the elevation reasons, the geotechnical reasons, on the, no pun intended, surface level. Sidebar question on the mitigation costs. Why did you choose the high end on the Windjammer site and the low end on the Friend property?
Primarily because the area of the Windjammer site is very small, and it's difficult to, there's not a great economy of scale in these unit costs. So once you get below a certain level, while there is a range there that we wanted to represent, it's probably realistic to expect we're going to be on the high side of that range, because the area is so small, and so it's less efficient. There's not an economy of scale that you would gain.
Super, thank you. And I agree with a lot of the comments that Mr. Trumber made. You know, acquisition costs, looking at that, although not a significant percentage of the overall cost, it is a significant cost. When you look at the alternate drawings, I like the alternate drawing, but I like taking the drawing that was done on the Friend property and orienting it east-west, taking that same basic layout. There's extra room around there, because we don't have to berm it up nearly as much, and contemplate running an east-west location. We're staying north of a bayshore extension, so we don't have those possible costs. I am not in favor of displacing a viable business. I've gotten to know Mr. Mammy, Mr. Johnson, and there's a neat human element to that story that they didn't tell, too, with that business and what they're doing for Mr. Sizemore. So I'm not for displacing a business if they eventually, down the road, wanted to sell and the city needed to acquire more space. That's possible, but there's a lot of room there behind Mr. Horrigan's property and the Pioneer Automotive property that is currently just parking lots, and I think we could work with that, and it keeps it out of the park. So I am for continuing forward. Like I said, I just want that to be a consideration. The last thing I would say is if we're going to go up eight inches, nine inches, a foot, let's go up two feet to keep this thing safe for a long time. There's no way to raise it later. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Savitis. If I can ask you, you mentioned the Aration Basin structure, and if I can, Mr. Mattson, the basin structures, these were the structures that we were, at one point, looking at burying and having bayshore or roadway on top of. And going to the Friend property, you mentioned that you were doing something different to them. Can you comment on what you're doing and why you're doing it? Concrete slabs on top of it, or covers on top of it?
This may show it best, at the inset, you can see the plan view, and so this is a section that's cut across the site looking in this direction. And what you see in that section view is that the Aration Basin is here. It's largely below grade, existing grade. It does extend above the existing grade, because we have to fill around it, so it makes sense to not bury it all the way. And then, in order to fit the process buildings that you need on this site and still provide access for circulation, large truck deliveries and the like, it's necessary to put these buildings over the top of the Aration Basin. So that's a strategy that we use when you have a small footprint to build on.
You would do this on the same as the alternate site?
Yes, sir. But the main difference is the loading that happens is less if you're not building a road over the top of that with, so, as you can see, maybe it's a little difficult to tell, but this isn't designed for those chemical trucks to be driving over the top of the basins, it's driving around the basins beneath.
This site here is doable. We heard that this evening. Okay. Can you go back to the floodplain picture? When we look at our existing, there we go. There it is. When we look at our existing wastewater treatment facility, it's in the floodplain, correct? In fact, when we looked at, initially looking at the Windjammer vicinity site, we were informed by our city engineer at that time that we were looking at the ballfields next to the existing wastewater treatment facility between the condos and the wastewater treatment facility. We didn't do any borings there, right?
Correct.
Okay. If the city council were to pass Resolution 1234, it leaves the options on the table. It doesn't select a site, correct?
Point of order. Point of order. Point of order.
For free.
Mayor, you are testifying.
I'm not testifying. I'm asking a question.
You are testifying.
I'm asking a question.
You are the facilitator of this council.
You are correct. And you're about ready to take action.
I will make a motion that you leave the testimony to the council.
I'm not testifying. I'm not testifying. I'm asking a question, which is, if you were to pass Resolution 1234, that leaves the options on the table, and in reference to any location, is that correct? Mr. Stoll.
Yes, it does.
Can we ask the question, why the Friend property was overlooked in the first place?
Yeah. I thought about this quite a bit, went back through what I remember of the, how we selected these sites, and when I started with the city in November of 2010, one of the first things I did was attend a public meeting with Brian and Eric and the community to start the selection process for the treatment plant. And we posted a map on the wall... And we posted a map on the wall of the city, and we asked the citizens that were there to take little notes, little posts, it's like you put at garage sale, and put them on the map where they thought a good place for a treatment plant would be. From that point, we went back and we looked at the technical merit of where these sites were placed and screened out the ones that were on extreme hillsides, didn't make sense in the middle of a lagoon, sites that were clearly not feasible. And from that, we developed 22 potential sites, now down to 13, to five, six, and then back down to two, and now Windjammer vicinity. What that boils down to is we started with the public and their selection of where they wanted the treatment plant to go and built from that.
Well, I appreciate that. I know when we added the sixth site, which is the North Crescent Harbor site, and it looked like we, we didn't identify that in the early stages, and the question was raised, what other properties did we miss at that point? And it looks like we didn't take a close, hard look at the Friend property, and it would, and so at this point, we turn to the city council and see what the council wishes to do. Councilmember Muns.
I have another question, please, Mayor. Mr. Mattson, something that was brought up by someone in the audience was the economic impact. Having, you're doing a, what, remodel or addition or improvement to the Bellingham plant, and it's downtown, and the Blaine plant was a brand-new plant that you did, do you know if it has helped revitalize stuff around them, or scared off commercial, or made no difference at all? Or do you not know? I just thought I'd throw it out to see if you happened to knew because of those areas.
Right. So in each case, the Bellingham's facility is not so centralized to the commercial district of town. It's in the Fairhaven neighborhood, so it's highly visible, but it's not, there's no real commercial viable activity surrounding, so that doesn't necessarily apply as this example would. I don't know specifically on Blaine if there has been any change or influx in commercial use of the facility, but I do know that it's viewed as an amenity by the folks that have been involved in that project, and my understanding is the community at large. I think what we, what we wanted to attempt to point out for this particular location is that if building a facility here in the manner of Blaine would not necessarily preclude economically viable development in and around that vicinity, and I believe that is the case.
All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Servades.
Thank you. I just want to, Mr. Mattson just touched on a point that I wanted to reiterate in that I think the, I'm going to call it Windjammer alternate, alternate, east-west location provides the best catalyst for more economic development, which we have all stressed, it's one of the mayor's goals, but once again, keeping that a very, an east-west location, not displacing current businesses, but hopefully providing a facility that actually would be a good neighbor and enhance them. And with that, I'm prepared to make a motion.
Feel free.
I move to adopt resolution 1233 to proceed with the facility plan as originally directed by resolution 1217.
Second. We've got a motion and a second. Turn back to Councilmember Servades to speak to his motion.
Enough said.
Okay. Anyone else? Councilmember Rumber.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, there's, Mr. Servades did bring something up that this facility does not have to be exactly placed in a footprint as shown on the charrette. It can be juxtaposed to the sites. Right now, we talked to, or two people who own property or have an interest in the property testified tonight, but we didn't hear from any of the other properties in there that give us other options also. So the motion for the resolution 1233 is really about continuing in this area, and I think that our experts, our engineers, have pointed out that the risks are less in that area than they are in moving farther south, including the Friend property. And the other thing too, that has not been brought up tonight, but there was discussion about possibly extending Bayshore Drive through the south side of these commercial properties through possible funding from the wastewater treatment plant. And what that actually does is it creates commercial street frontage on the south side of all of those properties, which in my experience would add more value to that property. And then those properties have street frontage on both Pioneer and on Bayshore, and it pulls our park into connectivity with the, with our commercial community. So I think if we work together on this thing and allow our staff to proceed with this as it's been proposed through this motion, I think that we'll get this thing done on some type of a schedule by our deadline of 2017. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak to the motion? Hearing none, okay. All those in favor of the motion, which is to adopt resolution 1233, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
And that motion passes, and we're, we have adopted resolution 1233. How are we doing on your extended time?
10:30.
10:30, okay, making sure.
Can we take a body break?
Absolutely. And we've got a request to take a recess, and we will do so, and we're in recess for five minutes. Okay, let's go ahead and reconvene, and turn to the podium as we bring up our next agenda item for this regular meeting of the Oak Harbor City Council, and we turn to Dr. Larry Court for our next agenda item, which is our legislative priorities.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. These will, should look awfully familiar since we just dealt with these at a special council workshop last week. As promised, we took what the, the discussion that emerged from that meeting and converted them quickly into revised Exhibit A to the proposed resolution. I hope that I have captured the changes that you wanted to make in the version that was produced last year for our 220 priorities, priorities into this document. The main ones, just to bring your attention, is the, a slight modification to the, to number five, which is the, with respect to the Deception Pass Bridge, and then modify, and then new ones on number 12 and number 13. Number 12 discussing the frequency of financial audits, and number 13, the, being very specific about the desire of the city to reinstate the historic revenue sharing system for liquor profits. So with those introductory comments, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Actually, we'll turn to the public and see if there's any public comment regarding city council's list of legislative priorities. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment and turn to the council, starting with Councilmember Servades.
Thank you. I move to approve resolution, resolution number 12-32.
Second.
Yeah, a motion from Councilmember Servades, second by Councilmember Muns. Any further discussion? Want to make sure we hear from everyone. Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That was quick and easy. Councilmember Rumber.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. In our workshop, we talked about setting a, or approaching our legislative team in Olympia about having a preliminary meeting to introduce these items to them. Do we need to set the date for that now, or should staff go ahead and do that? What's your plan?
Glad you asked, we've been working on that, and I'll turn to Dr. Larry Court.
Yeah, I was going to bring this up during my comments later, but I'm happy to bring it up now. We're actually going to be asking the council to consider a special council workshop to discuss the lodging tax revenue, the changes that will, that will be happening in 2013, and other matters related to the lodging tax, including the recommendation of the committee. Our thought was we would try and combine that, do two things during one workshop, and our suggestion is December, is Wednesday, December 5th, at 6 o'clock, we would, depending on our legislator's schedule, we would try and either schedule them first or second in, for those two items. And if that doesn't work, we'll certainly be happy to look for an alternative date. So.
I can tell you right now, I won't be here for that one.
Okay.
On that date, it's pretty short notice at this time.
It's like Mr. Servades is also iffy as well. Ms. Muns is.
Can you repeat the date?
December 5th, Wednesday, December 5th.
Do you want to throw out other suggestions? Councilmember Rumber, Councilmember Servades.
Most nights of the week, Tuesday would be best for me, so the following 11th. If we're looking for evening timeframes, Tuesdays for me are by far the best shot.
I can't do Tuesdays at all.
Okay, yeah.
Need to be evening?
Well, most likely, when we're calling upon your legislative officials, we're going to try to see what we can do to make it convenient for them. You know, one idea or thought is to see what we can do for an afternoon, sort of like we do with our standing committee meetings, and at least throw it out to them, and we can always come back.
For Mr. Servades and Mr. Rumber, would sometime earlier in the day on the, on?
I'm out of town the whole day.
Oh, okay, all right.
And I don't, yeah, it isn't, that week isn't going to work for me. For the 10th, 11th, 12th, and 13th, day or evening works for me, except we have a finance standing committee meeting at 3:30, but those dates, you know, you can, if it works for anybody else, pick one of those.
Would Monday, the 10th be a possibility? Sounds like Councilmember Heisen could not make it on Tuesday, the 11th.
Timeframe?
It can be an evening meeting, 6 o'clock, would that work on Tuesday, on Monday, the 11, Monday, the 10th?
It's better, yeah, than, yes.
If that works for me.
Thumbs up, thumbs up. All right.
6 o'clock?
All right, we'll try and make arrangement with our legislative contingent, and we'll be contacting them, if not tomorrow, which may be difficult, but certainly early, early next week, so, thank you.
Good question, and now we've got a date, and we'll run with that, and we appreciate that. And now we turn back to our agenda and our next agenda item, and we turn to podium for Director of Development Services, Mr. Powers.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, the next item on your agenda is a proposed interlocal agreement establishing the Island County Housing Advisory Board. Interlocal agreement would between, would be between Island County, Langley, Coopville, and Oak Harbor. It simply put would replace the existing interlocal agreement that you have, and it would essentially bring about an administrative change, putting together two existing boards into a single board devoted to a coordinated approach to housing for people in need. Due to the lateness of the hour, I think I'll just stop right there and see what questions you might have.
And we'll turn to the public, see if there's any public comment regarding this agenda item. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment and turn to the council, starting with Councilmember Heisen.
I have no questions.
Councilmember Rumber.
Thank you, Mayor. No questions, and I'd be happy to make a motion when you're ready.
Feel free.
No question, Your Honor.
Okay. Did you want to go ahead and make the motion?
Sure. Make a motion that we approve the interlocal agreement and amendment document and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
We've got a motion from Councilmember Rumber, second from Councilmember Muns. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And that passes unanimously. Mr. Powers? Our next agenda item is taken up by our interim city administrator, Dr. Larry Court. Dr. Court?
Again, thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm very pleased to be bringing forward a contract renewal for Jack Kerr for our Public Defense Administration Services. Mr. Kerr has been performing this role since, believe it or not, 1999. He is, he does a superb job, he's in a, in a very difficult role, and we're very pleased that he wants to continue in that role, and we're, and we're happy to be bringing this forward for council consideration and action to approve the amendment, which would extend his tenure in that role until the end of next year.
Turning to the public and see if there's any public comment regarding this agenda item. We'll just go on record. If not, we'll go ahead and close public comment, turn to the council, starting with Councilmember Servades.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to approve the agreement as submitted and authorize the mayor to sign the extension to the agreement for Public Defense Administration Services with Jack Kerr.
Got a motion.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Muns.
I'd like to make one comment. Jack Kerr was a junior high and high school counselor, and he is in his element in this job, and it's just excellent, and so I'm glad we are being able to extend this contract.
I would, staff would concur with that, so.
Good, good. Okay. Hearing no other comments, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Okay, pass unanimously. Looks like one of our last agenda items, we turn to our fire chief, Fire Chief Ray Merrill for a possible EMS agreement with Whidby General Hospital. Chief Merrill?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I've got 11 pages, I'm going to read to you every line item, every piece and part.
I'd make a motion that we adjourn.
You already lost them.
I'm going to be very brief. You've had an opportunity to review the contract with Whidby General Hospital. It is a revenue generator of about $49,000 a year. In the amount of time that we've had this contract with Whidby General, we've taken in about 50, $555,000 from 1999 to now. It did go through the hospital's legal review, it went through our legal review, and the adjust of the agenda bill is to authorize the mayor to sign the contract that is good from now until the end of 2013, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chief Merrill. We do open it up for any public comment, but seeing none, we'll go ahead and close public comment and turn to the city council, starting with Councilmember Servades.
I thought I just started.
Oh, Councilmember Heisen.
Start again.
Other than to point out that I love how Mr. Reinie still focuses on the public even when there is no public, I would like to move that we accept the EMS agreement.
Is there a number?
I don't see one. Just an EMS agreement, all right.
But we do have a motion.
We authorize the mayor to sign the contract for pre-hospital care, emergency medical care with Whidby General Hospital, yes.
Yes, that's a motion, and we do have a second from Councilmember Rumber. Any further discussion? Okay, see, oh, Mayor Protemp Pagal.
Thank you, honor. Is this retroactive agreement? Because it says January 1st, 2012, until December 31, 2013.
Yes, it is retroactive to the first of the year.
And the second question is, will, will the fee goes to fire department or goes to the general fund?
Well, in this case, the, in fact, I don't think our finance director is still, it goes to the general fund, yeah, in this case, but we, hats off to our fire chief for doing a great job for solidifying this year's agreement, and, but those dollars go to the general fund.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, we've got a motion on the floor. All those in favor of the motion on the floor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Merrill. In your packets, you'll In your packets, you'll see future city council pending items, and at this time, we'll turn to our interim city administrator for city administrator comments. Dr. Court?
I will be brief tonight. The, I just wanted to give you a quick update on where we are on filling some of our key positions. I'm happy to say that we're making some good progress on getting some key slots filled. Of course, since the last council meeting, we now have Cheryl Lawler in the regular HR manager position, so we're happy to have her on board in a full-time capacity. We have interviews next week on for city clerk. We have interviews on December 5th for city attorney. Today, the individual who's going to run the recruitment for Prothman came to City Hall and interviewed a number of stakeholders, trying to get folks' opinion on what we were looking for in a new city attorney, so that process is underway. The timeline that he handed out to all of us during that meeting suggested that if all goes well, they would like to be in interviews for the city attorney by about the third week of February. So, that's a good timetable for, and we're hoping that he can, that he can, that the firm can make that, can meet that schedule. And finally, it's a position that we haven't talked much about, but it has been vacant since the beginning part of this year, is our assistant city attorney position. As you know, that work has been done ably by Nikki Asparza under a professional services contract. The mayor will be bringing forward a proposal at the December 4th meeting to actually have the council consider the appointing Ms. Asparza to the staff position of assistant city attorney, and that will be coming forward on December 4th. So, we're getting the slots filled, and that's good news.
Thank you, Dr. Court. Any questions for Dr. Court? Okay, seeing none. We'll turn to the council for council members' comments, and as you do give your comments, one thing I would want to throw out there to you, just an idea, a suggestion, is since it's almost Thanksgiving, if you wanted to share with us one thing that you're thankful for, we would entertain it, starting with Mayor Protem Pagan.
Thank you, Honor. The next Public Works and Utilities Standing Committee meeting will be on Thursday, December 6, 2012, at 3:30 PM here at City Hall. And for this Thanksgiving, I would like to thank all the volunteers for the city, and they make a difference, to make City of Cover a beautiful place to live.
You're right, absolutely. Thank you, Mayor Protem Pagan. Councilmember Campbell.
Thank you. I don't have much to say, other than I think December the 11th is our next government services meeting. I would invite anyone from the public that would like to attend to come and show up. We'd like to have you. The thing, I'm going to, I've got two things I'm very thankful for. One is an excellent, loving wife. The other one is the fact that, for all practical purposes, it looks like my prostate cancer has been cured. I'm off medication. Next test is in May, and that'll be, that'll be probably the one where he kicks me out for a while. Thank you.
Lot to be thankful for. Councilmember Romberg.
Thank you, Mayor. The next finance standing committee meeting is scheduled for December the 12th at 3:30 PM right here. And, you know, I'm thankful for a lot of things, and, you know, can't put them in any specific order, you know? I'm thankful for the, for this community, for my family, for my wife's support, not financial support, you know, you know what I mean. And I also have a new granddaughter. She was born just a week ago Saturday, so now we have another one in the family. Thank you.
Lot to be thankful for. Councilmember Muns.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. December 20th is our next public safety meeting, and we are rolling a... It's nice to have Chief Green with us now, and handling that readily, and I like my fellow councilmembers, and thankful for a lot of things. My health, the support, love the community, love of my family, and especially right now, thankful for Help House, that our community is very giving and supports it so that we can actually give a whole dinner to families, not just pieces of things, but a whole turkey and the pie and the rolls and eggs and all of that, and it's a joy that our community sponsors something like that, as well as the community dinner.
Great, lot to be thankful for. Councilmember Heisen.
Thank you, Mayor. I didn't really have anything to say, so I'm glad that you gave us an assignment. I have a lot to be thankful for. I'm not going to lie, it's, I've had a really rough couple of years, mostly health-wise, but just it's been a really, really rough couple of years, and things are looking up, and so I'm really, really thankful for that. It's nice to finally start getting some good news for a change, so that's been happening more and more often, so I'm very happy about that. And as far as city goes, I'm really grateful for the level of participation that we get here in Oak Harbor. The fact that we fill the chairs at a meeting and that we have to get more bandwidth, because we have so many people watching online, and that I get stopped in the store and on the street by people who have questions about what they read in the paper, or they, oh, I watch you on Channel 10, and I just get stopped by perfect strangers and in the most unexpected places, and that people feel comfortable doing that, and they're really engaged, you know? People could really just kind of be on autopilot and go about their day, but they're not, and I love that in our city, people are really genuinely interested and engaged, and they're participating, which is, I think that that's, I think that that's unique, at least I like to think so. So, that's definitely something to be grateful for.
Thank you, Councilmember Heisen. Councilmember Servadius.
Thank you. Much to be thankful for. I just lost a grandma of 106 and a half years, and that very much makes me focus. It was, it's a good thing, not a good thing, but she passed in her own home, in her own bed, very peacefully, so it reminds me of family, and I have an incredible family, so I have to prioritize that at the top of the list. Thank you.
And we turn to Mayor's comments. Couple items I would want to point out, we've got new art here in the council chambers. The art is provided by Karen Leeds. Karen Leeds was an amateur photographer for many years, taking the family and vacation photos and sharing them with friends and relatives. Her travels in the past few years, as well as living in the beautiful northwest, have given her inspiration to take her craft to a higher level and focus in on the artistic aspects of the medium. She notes that her eye is drawn to the play of light and shadow, and to textures and patterns and shapes, how they work together to enhance each other or to create a memorable image. She looks at details more than scenes, even though she has many images of landscapes and buildings that incorporate these qualities. So, we want to thank Ms. Leeds for providing the art in here, and we encourage all of the public to come down as the council chambers is open, and you can take in these fine pieces of art and her work there. Another couple things, day after tomorrow, Thanksgiving, something that's unique about our community is the Community Harvest Celebration that happens at the Elks. In the past, they've served over 4,000 meals, and I'm sure it's going to be popular again on Thursday. That happens from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM. A lot of volunteers and a lot of individuals come out to obtain their free Thanksgiving meal and have, sit down with their fellow neighbors, and so I would point that out. I would also point out that today, a couple things. Down at the Help House, two school buses pull up, and we had middle schools that were, did a fill-the-bus program and campaign, and had quite a few elementary schools that also helped out, and these school buses were full of food items that were donated by the community, by the schools for the Help House, and that was great. Later on in the afternoon, up at the corner of Seventh and Midway was a three-car accident. To see the response from our police department and fire department was very impressive, and so I am thankful for living in a safe community, and I'm also thankful for being able to turn our faucet on and have drinkable water, but we live in a great community, and it's nice to take a step back and realize what we have, because we are truly blessed. With that, we wish everyone a great Thanksgiving, hope it's memorable, and the Thanksgiving that you can enjoy with your loved ones and family, and at this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of adjourned signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? We are adjourned.